July 21st, 2008, meeting, time's seven o'clock. And will you please join me, stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to liberty, public rights, and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Knudsen.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Roquan.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Virchell.
Here.
I've asked the Chief of Police to give us an update on a level-three sexual offender who has taken up residence in the city, and so he has some information for us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Put a PowerPoint presentation together here for you real quick and see if we can get that to come up on the screen. This gentleman's name is William Meadows. He's a level-three sex offender out of Minnesota. Here's a picture of Mr. Meadows. He's about 30 years old, gonna be 31, male, black, about 210 pounds, brown hair, about 5'11", medium build. He's currently residing at this residence at 701 Eleventh Street South here in the city of Hudson. He's living there with his girlfriend and her three children. This residence is on the corner of 11th and Colonial Drive. According to the website, Minnesota Department of Corrections website, they stated that the offender has a history of sexual contact with adult female victims. Contact includes fondling, and that Mr. Meadows had gained access to the victims by breaking into their homes, and the offender was not known to his female victims. He's currently living there with his girlfriend and her three children at this present time. I want to stress this, that Mr. Meadows is currently not wanted by the police department, nor is he on probation or parole at this time. He has served his time in the prison system in Minnesota. He is completely off paper. The only thing he has to do is he has to register with the state of Wisconsin within 10 days of moving here, which he has been in contact with the state of Wisconsin on Minnesota felt he was a threat to reoffend again, that's why they made him a level-three. That's why we consider him a level-three also. I have met with Mr. Meadows on one occasion, and his girlfriend on two occasions, let them know what we were going to be doing, and they both felt that they could live here in this community even with the notification that was going on, so it was their belief to stay here. What we have done as a department is we have distributed flyers to the surrounding neighborhoods right within about two or three blocks of where Mr. Meadows is living, to each one of the residents that were there. We've also handed out flyers to a lot of the businesses up on Hill and downtown. We've notified the newspaper, who's put an article in the paper, to let people become aware of this situation, and where this gentleman is living at, and so forth, so we're trying to notify as many people in the city as possible. Currently, we are going to host a community-wide notification meeting this Wednesday night, the 23rd, at eight o'clock, or correction, at six o'clock, at the high school auditorium. I will be there along with other members of the police department. Members of the Wisconsin Department of Corrections will be there to answer questions in regards to the sex offender registration program, and other public officials will be present as well. So, I encourage you, if you have any questions or concerns about Mr. Meadows and why he's doing, why he's here, and so forth, please come to this meeting. We'll try to answer as many questions as we possibly can. And that's all I have for you, if there's any questions from the council.
Thank you. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone present who wishes to address the council on an item that might have an impact on the city of Hudson, or, and/or that the common council might address at a future meeting, this is your chance. You can come up. This is not for our items that are on the agenda. If you're here to talk about conditional use permit for Heritage Greens, that'll come later. Anyone wish to speak to the council on another item? Is there anyone? We'll move on to consent agenda. Could you read the consent agenda, please?
To approve the public hearing in regular meeting minutes of July 7th, 2008, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $404,932.29, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request, to approve the outdoor patio area for Keys Cafe and Bakery, 840 Carmichael Road, and to authorize the city clerk to change the premises on their license contingent on obtaining the necessary building and fence permits following successful completion of their required inspections, and with the additional consideration that the city receive payment for any outstanding debt. To place on file the Public Utility Commission minutes of July 8th, 2008. That is all.
Vote for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Morsette?
Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roquan?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Next item is from the Plan Commission.
The item is request to amend the conditional use permit for Heritage Greens, planned residential development to expand the commercial area from 4.4 acres up to 5.6 acres. Proposed 2.35 acres flex lots for residential indoor commercial, and proposed 6.79 acres for multiple-family residential development to include special-needs housing for seniors, persons with disabilities, memory care, and other needs, generally located north of Hanley Road and west of State Trunk Highway 35 by Bright Keys Beadhaman Farm LLC. And Community Development Director Dennis Darnold will present the Plan Commission recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. City Plan Commission recommends approval of the Bright Keys requests for amendment to the conditional use permit for the Heritage Greens planned residential development with the following amendments and conditions. That staff report and recommendations dated 7/8/08 memo from Dennis Darnold, Community Development Director, incorporating his recommendations, which include the four notations on the notes page. One is, is not, number four was buildings within one property may have no separation expansion, and buildings may be contiguous. On item number 13, that footings low-grade or not to be included in encroachments in the right-of-way, and also in numbers 23 and number 22 and 23 notations is that I am recommending that a master signage plan be incorporated into the recommendations. Amendments proposed by Bright Keys to the Plan Commission of July 10th, 08, encroachments in the right-of-ways limited to signs, lighting fixtures, and awnings. Up to 10 residential units for parcel P1. Landscape and streetscape standards be incorporated, those are included in the notes. Limit height of structure on parcel P3 to two stories. Fluctuation up to 20% of building square footage for commercial buildings. On-street parking be maintained by an association, not the city of Hudson, and parcels P1 and P2 are further limited according to the use chart. A use chart that was presented had two things that needed to be amended. One on parcel P1, under office, business, and professional, that would be a conditional use permit. There was an omission under apartments three-plus units and apartments three-plus elderly under P1, that those would be permitted uses. That is the recommendation. There's been some other issues that have been discussed with me recently. One is any sales offices, consideration how long may be permitted as part of this development. There's some questions on the B1 type uses, and also specific plans, so I'm certainly willing to discuss those specific issues at the time that's appropriate.
Denny, could you go back? In your opening, you referenced one of your memos, and I thought I heard you say 7/8.
Well, there's two memos that was presented, actually, two memos, one being revised. There's a 7/8/08 memorandum that came from me to the Plan Commission prior to the January 10th meeting. That had my original recommendations, which discussed some of the notations. And also, there is a memorandum from me dated Friday, July 18th, actually, July 16th, when the packets went out on Wednesday, are revised as part of the issue sheet on July 18th. There are just some very minor adjustments, one being is that Bright Keys did agree to the recommendations that I had proposed. There was one exception, and that being... They wanted one free standing sign per parcel. I was recommending a master streets plan would be submitted to the city of Hudson.
And so, is the requirement for a master sign plan, is that in your memo?
Yes, it is, and that's a recommendation from me outside of the Plan Commission.
Yes, since the Plan Commission action.
That's correct.
And are there any other recommendations or changes that you're making that we need to highlight right now since the action of the Plan Commission?
No, not at this time.
How about the, the question came up to me about, we talked about a surety bond to ensure the completion of a couple of the market squares at the Plan Commission. PowerPoint presentation by the applicant talked about a timeframe for other changes. We didn't, we, we did not specifically include that timeline in our...
That's correct.
Motion.
That's something the common council could give consideration to tonight. There was some question on how specific this plan needs to be. It's extremely difficult at this level to include plans for detailed parks, street improvements, buildings, and so forth. Please understand that the Plan Commission and the common council will have an opportunity as street utility plans come in, will do development agreements, which may and should incorporate the timing and plans middles for the market greens and the harvest greens and Harmony Greens areas. Also, again, the building plans for any building would come in as a typical or traditional building seminoles. So, Plan Commission would review a concept plan, review a final development plan, and then review a final development plan, which the recommendation goes to the common council for approval. So, at that time, we're looking at the compliance of the various plans in conjunction with this plan that is being considered tonight, so there's an opportunity for the common council to review those detailed plans in the future. But as far as the surety, one, we need a specific plan upon which a cost estimate could be derived, and I would suggest that those be submitted no later than six months from tonight, if that is a consideration of the common council.
One of the other items after the Plan Commission was that we focused much of our discussion on parcels P1 and P2, and in our discussion, we were discussing that they would be flex and could be, I thought, in my understanding was at the time that we were putting down single-family duplex and the limited townhome condo things that we agreed, and there was a very specific number of uses. I learned afterwards that we did not specifically have a line for residential, so we had precluded residential, essentially.
There's no inclusion of one- and two-family residential considerations. We're inclusion for multiple family, which is three or more units in a structure, not for one family and two families, and certainly, that's something the common council could consider tonight, including in that use chart.
Let me make a couple comments about how I think we might handle the issue here tonight, and you can give me feedback or choose to do it differently if you'd like. It's my suggestion that we hear briefly from the applicant, maybe five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever your choice might be, that we may have some preliminary discussion before we hear from the public, but then, I had suggested, and I think I sent this around to people, that I think having further public input might be of some value. So, I proposed the idea of 20 minutes for those in favor, 20 minutes opposed, with the idea that everyone would be limited to around three minutes. Some might be much less, that way we could quickly get through some. Now, the question came to me, well, what if several people wanted to turn their time allotment over to someone else and let there be a main spokesman for one side? In other words, empower someone to sort of speak for their side. I guess that's up to you. I see no reason not to do that, but as it stands, the kind of the ground rules that I was suggesting would be multiple people, as many as we can fit in. My general comments about this are that this has been an issue that has had a lot of interest, some pretty hot opinions. We've had very engaged residents, homeowners, citizens, circulation of petitions, attending meetings. We have had very well-attended meetings. Tonight's actually a smaller crowd than what I might have expected because we've had a bigger crowd. I might take that to mean that we're getting close to something that has people see it as acceptable. I think the crux of this issue has been and continues to be the two parcels that are on the border between two developments, and those two developments have a different view of how residential development should be done. One is very traditional suburban cul-de-sac style development, lots that are half-acre, a lot of them. The other is the first mixed-use new urbanism, traditional neighborhood development that we've done in Hudson. It was done as a planned residential development. It was done on a conditional use permit. That means that there is inherently, needs to be flexibility. You don't necessarily set a plan, and then that plan goes forever. It's new ground for us in Hudson. It's new ground for a lot of people that didn't buy into that plan, but bought into a neighborhood next door. They don't necessarily, they didn't necessarily sign up for the idea that there'd be commercial so close to their homes, but that is part of what the new urbanist vision is, is that you make a sort of mini downtown, a mini, a mini version that has multiple different mixed uses altogether. And as such, we've struggled a little bit to fit this in. Frankly, the 4.4 acres that was originally planned is very near the Hanshagen Red Cedar Canyon development, and those folks have basically a traditional suburban subdivision development. Because of that proximity, I think as we went forward, if we stuck with that 2002 plan, each and every business that was proposed there was probably going to create some pretty intense public comment about what was going in within 200 feet of single-family homes. And so, my goal as we went into this was to try to fashion something that could be livable, be acceptable for all the people, so that we could try to get the Heritage Greens folks to get their development completed in a fashion that's somewhat similar to what that traditional neighborhood development vision is, and at the same time, giving due concern at all times to the residents that live nearby that were worried about what's going to be so close. That's been the way that the Plan Commission went at this. It's been modified a number of times. I think right now, what it really comes down to, and for your consideration tonight, is, is the Plan Commission right, or should parcels P1 and P2 be made single-family residential only, or as another alternative, single-family and some version of townhome or multifamily? That, I think, would be very acceptable to most of the people, and with that, I'd say even before we have the public comments, we may be ready to take action here, but I'm going to turn this over to the council. We can have some brief discussion if you wish, or we can move directly on to hearing from the applicant and the developer. What is your pleasure? Do you want to have a presentation from Heritage Greens first?
Speaking for myself, I'd like to hear from the members of the public on both sides. I think we've seen so much paperwork from Heritage Greens that we understand what their presentation would be.
One of the challenges to having 40 minutes of public comment is that if at the end of that, we modify the proposal, which, maybe I should go through those options, we went through this in the Plan Commission, you could deny this tonight, and if it is denied, then Heritage Greens, Bright Keys, or whoever controls his property can't come back and apply for a change to the conditional use permit again for six months. So, that's one option. You could approve it, as it came from the Plan Commission and has subsequently been modified slightly by Denny Darnold's recommendation. You could approve it with further modifications. If there are members of the council right now who know that they aren't going to approve this without further modifications, then we may as well have some discussion about those, and maybe even a motion on those right now before we have the comment. I think the comments will be quite different if we've changed the plan, so all I'm saying is, before we have a bunch of comments on something that if the members know they're intending to change it, we might be spinning our wheels for a better part of an hour.
May I ask a question? Your comment about six months, I thought that was, the same proposal cannot be proposed for six months.
Danny, what's the denial? Denial, six-month period?
For any new proposal.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, a couple, two different questions. I am in favor of changing P1 and P2 to single residential. And on P, on this map, Denny, and I don't know in particular, under P5 and P3, you have a story upon the conditional use permit, is that to be there, or is that...
Let me clarify, yeah, for P, P3 is a limitation of the two-story building maximum. The limitations also as far as specific uses would be disability housing, senior housing, or townhomes. Any other type of housing would be a conditional use permit requirement, so they have come back through a public hearing process. That same provision applies to P5, except the Plan Commission stated it'd be a limit of a two-story building. If a three-story building would be proposed, then that has to come back through a conditional use permit process.
Is that a part of the alternative plan?
That's correct.
Well, okay, let me restate, because this is complicated, and I think, were you really, really clear on the answer there?
Yeah, I know what he said.
Okay, on the map, Denny, on this map that everyone has, it says on this map that both P5 and P3 could have two-story with a three-story by conditional use permit, but that's not the recommendation from the Plan Commission.
The Plan Commission, Bright Keys agreed to, and the Plan Commission recommends, incorporates a limit of two-story building only on P3.
So, this is incorrect.
This is incorrect. This was submitted by the developer, and that does not reflect what was recommended by the Plan Commission.
I will reiterate that I support P1 and P2 being single residential.
Okay, is that a motion for approval of the Plan Commission recommendation with the not, you're just saying that's where you stand? Okay.
I agree. P1 and P2 is the correspondence and the comments that I've been receiving, there's a great deal of concern about P1 and P2, and making that single-family homes.
Would, would you permit me to ask for a bit of clarification? Because in the Plan Commission, we lowered the building height on those parcels to one story. Now, if we were to go back to single-family residential, would we apply just our standard single-family residential zoning, building heights, and lot setback requirements there, and basically undo everything that we've done there? It would be just a standard, single-family. Denny, you want to try to clarify? I'm asking a question of you, but I think really it's a question we need clarification of how we'll do that.
Well, my suggestion, if you're going to consider one-family residential, that yes, a two-story building be permitted, you have two-story, single-family homes behind them. I don't see why they would have any objection to that. As far as the, I just want to clarify the issue of what's called the standard setbacks in regards to the zoning ordinance. There are setbacks for this traditional neighborhood that's less than what's in our standard, and that's already been discussed and approved, so that should remain to be consistent with what was approved in the Heritage Greens planned residential development in 2002. The single-family ought to be consistent between the two periods of time, but a two-story residential structure would be permitted, basically could be up to a height of 35 feet.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if this, the P1 and P2 together are around 1.5 acres, if they were done in the style of Red Cedar Canyon, it would be probably three lots. If they were done in the style of Heritage Greens, maybe five lots.
Again, I would suggest if you're going to require that, that be required at the standard of Heritage Greens to be consistent with what's existing in Heritage Greens, not what's consistent with what's in Red Cedar Canyon.
I'm okay with that.
With that, any further discussion? You want to go right to public comment? That was your question? Yes?
One other comment, I would like to hear from the developer. I think if we're going to hear 40 minutes of comments from residents, the developer has a lot invested in this as well, and I'd like to hear a five-to-10-minute presentation, probably no more than that's necessary, but just so everyone's hearing the same thing and commenting on the same.
I agree, I would like to hear, because there's been so many conversations about changes, what is the current plan we're talking about?
Do you want it to be five minutes or 10 minutes?
Five to 10 is fine with me.
Not more than 10?
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Will the representatives from Bright Keys Beadhaman Farm LLC come forward, give us a five-to-10-minute presentation, please?
Mark, are those the same maps that we have, or are these updated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Plan Commission members, city staff, thanks for listening to our Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission members, city staff, thanks for listening to our proposal this evening. Maybe if I could, just a little bit of history. I'm CR Hackworthy, and I have Terry Perius here as well. Two of us are involved in the partnership that own the property that we intend to develop here. We bought this property 10 years ago. It was certainly a different economic time 10 years ago than it is today in 2008. We think we had a pretty good vision eight years ago when we came to the city and presented the proposal for Heritage Greens. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's worked out wonderful. And the only thing we don't have going with this is the economic times to create the economic driver of single-family homes. At the time, when we first presented this proposal, we were at about seven and a half acres of commercial. And with what we saw as the economic driver in the residential, we backed it down and proposed the 4.2, 4.4. That was the PUD that was approved about seven years ago. Obviously, it's difficult to vision and predict what's going to happen in the future. Terry and I have been involved in this community, developing residential, commercial buildings, homes for over 25 years in Hudson, in the St. Craig Valley area here. We've been very successful at it. Obviously, we're in a time today that not many people in this room have ever witnessed in terms of the economic driver going away in terms of housing. It's been challenging, to say the least. Matter of fact, as we look at this plan, which we started seven months ago with the help of staff and the Planning Commission, and about 300 neighbors have had input, work product. We've had help from Putnam Planning Design, Stevens Engineering, and have spent a lot of money, a lot of time, and a lot of effort over the last seven months to bring this plan forward to you this evening. But it's important. There's a lot of things to consider. And one of the things that we haven't talked about are the economic drivers. Of this plan, a lot of economic drivers have been removed already. Quick Trip has been removed to across the street. That may or may not happen. The bank, as recently as last week, was going to purchase a parcel and build three buildings. They've now backed off, they're only going to build one. So we've lost two buildings from the bank anchor. And then to hear this evening that we might want to propose single-family, single-family is not an economic driver for what we need to accomplish here. If the housing market was there, I would stand up here and say, yeah, let's put five more lots out there. But we do not have an economic driver for single-family housing right now. And I don't see an economic driver. I don't see the bottom of this market for at least two years, and I see a very slow climb out of this market. And I don't even know that we'll hit the numbers that we've hit in the past over the next 15 to 20 years. So the economics going forward are going to be completely different than the economics looking back. And restrictions on us as the developer are things that are very difficult today to consider, especially with the removal of some of the economic drivers that we have made the changes to this plan to try to accommodate everybody. But we still need economic drivers. And I think that's important to point out, and I don't think it's something that we should just quickly give up. Because without an economic driver, no matter the reputation that I have, or the business experience that I have, or that Terry Perius has, and the success that we've had in the past, without an economic driver, a project will fail. A project that has too many restrictions placed upon it will fail, especially in these difficult times. So I would just please have you consider what we have accomplished so far in over a dozen meetings with the neighborhood. I applaud the folks at Heritage Greens. I applaud the folks at Red Cedar Canyon for all of their work and their input and their work product that they have developed as teams to try to come up with what we think is a good plan tonight. But I just don't want to see too many restrictions come into play that make it difficult for us to go out and do the financing, to do the things that we need to do to make this project happen. Retail, if you read the Wall Street Journal this morning, has absolutely fallen off the charts in terms of demand. And that's always a concern. Retail follows housing. And we believe that with housing down, that's why we wanted to bring in the retail and the commercial components of this development, to create the economic drivers, to finish off Heritage Greens, and so that we can wait out the timeframe that we need to bring in the big box and the other corners of the Hanley and 35 intersection that we also own. So with that, I'd like to introduce the development team. Phil Domer, Vice President of Bright Keys, and also Mark Putnam from Putnam Planning Design. And also want to thank them for their efforts that they've put forward. But again, I just want to reinforce the efforts that the mayor and Danny Darnold in particular, how hard they have worked as well to really bring forth a better plan than what we originally envisioned. This is, with changes to this plan, it would be Plan Number 11 that we've envisioned here. So again, thanks for allowing us to be heard tonight.
Thank you. Mark, five minutes.
Need one of them to hook up.
All right.
Mark's going to get set up here, and then I'll make the presentation. First, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Phil Domer, Vice President of Bright Keys and the Development Company. And we appreciate you're here tonight to hear us out, as well as the neighbors again. Thank you for all your input and all the extra work that has been done. While he sets up here, I just want to comment on the economic driver. One of the reasons CR state on that is because to deliver the kind of amenities that we have at Heritage Greens, that really sets it apart as the greatest, I believe, neighborhood in Hudson, and to deliver on some of the commitments we've made to our neighbors, we need to continue doing things that make economic sense. I know that the pool isn't a part of the 2002 approval, but we did add that later and made a commitment to folks. And to deliver those things in the plan that we have today, we need to get that approved and move forward. So I will fall back on a statement that says brevity is the sister of success, so I will try to be brief. I see your look, Mayor, so I will move forward and go through quickly these things. I don't want to talk a lot about the process. You heard it from CR. I want to talk about the plan comparison mostly and ask you specifically what we need you to do for us and for the many neighbors at Heritage Greens who are requesting this approval. Our process, we've had many informal staff meetings and neighborhood meetings. We've had a formal site walkthrough. We've had at least five open neighborhood meetings. We initially invited 744 households to that. We have been going, have ongoing refinement with both the neighbors and business people and yourselves. Really, what we're focusing on here is the dash line there to the right or south. That's the section we're talking about. Everything else there has already been approved. And it's not going to show up there. If you look at this map, the one difference between the 2002 plan and the plan you see today is that the plan you see today is based on a great deal of neighborhood input. 2002, we didn't have that because we didn't have neighbors. This plan is supported by, I think, all but now, maybe the neighbors can correct me, I think all but six people who have property interests in Heritage Greens. So a great deal of support. And obviously, we have Red Cedar to think about as well, and we do have some support there. So our plan today is based on neighborhood input. That's one of the significant changes. We didn't have that advantage in 2002. But here are some of the changes that were made. We shifted the commercial away from Red Cedar Canyon. We've identified land uses more specifically, and that's in your land use chart. I'm going to give this to Danny. He can distribute it when it's appropriate. But this is the land use chart that includes the comments from the Planning Commission. And it also limits the height on P3 to two stories. And we're agreeable to all those things. We've brought clarity and additional controls to the height, land use signage and landscaping and architectural details. So it's no longer a gray area. We are bringing that to some type of clarity for the neighbors and for ourselves and for the businesses that want to locate here. We've added a new public green and defined the build-out plan for parks. To complete those parks, we need to move forward on this proposal. And we've created a commercial association that will take care of three of the parks. That wasn't in the plan before, to relieve pressure from our neighbors. So here are the two plans. On the left side is the old plan, where you see all the red buildings against Red Cedar. Those were commercial previously. We've moved them out towards 35 and essentially centered the commercial area away from Red Cedar Canyon. So really, what we've tried to do was be sensitive to the suburban model, and yet keep intact the things that are very important to the people that bought into Heritage Greens. And that's a mixed-use neighborhood with a real town center feel. To talk about P1 and P2 for a second, because that seems to be the crux of the issue. We talk about traditional suburban planning. We have single-family there, and if this were traditional suburban planning, the next use you would put would be a lower-intensity transitional use. We've given you that in your land use chart. We're limiting that parcel already to one-story buildings, primarily residential, and low-intensity commercial uses. I believe we fulfilled that planning objective of having a transitional zone, and then we transition out to our town square, our market square. There are many things about Heritage Greens that haven't been changed. And I encourage you to look at that map that's been submitted by the neighbors of the overwhelming support in Heritage Greens. These are the things they want, and these are the things this plan delivers. A pedestrian-friendly design, traffic calming and vehicle trip reduction so that people can stay within the neighborhood, mixed-use commercial environment in a vibrant way around that new market square, a real sense of the town square, and we've actually made it larger, a variety of housing types and housing unit count. I want to say thank you to those who have supported us in bringing affordable senior housing, as well as housing for people with disabilities. They are part of this community, and we've said from day one, we will bring it here. We can't bring it here unless you approve this plan. And finally, we have a commitment and a mechanism to continue on the design character and also to fund those amenities which are so important to the residents who have bought into Heritage Greens. In short, Heritage Greens will remain a place for people to start and stay in Hudson. And we intend it to be the best neighborhood, and we hope that with your support, we can get there. So we're asking you today to approve this Site Plan 10 with the conditions both from the Planning Commission and from Mr. Darnold. And we ask you to consider not only our position, the position of Mr. Hackworthy, but also the many residents who want to see this plan approved. So I thank you for your time. I'm available for questions, as well as Mark Putman. He's our master planner, and as you know, his work is highly respected. So we're here for you as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Phil?
Yes, I do have one, Mr. Domer. You mentioned there are six people who are not in favor of your plan. There's already been litigation filed. Is that the same six people?
First of all, there's, just with Heritage Greens, the red ones on your map are those not in favor. And I frankly prefer not to comment on litigation.
Okay, but there is litigation pending already.
Regarding a pool which was never part of the 2002 plan.
Okay.
I have a question in regard to the senior housing and persons with disabilities. You mentioned that that won't go in if this plan is unapproved or, can you clarify that, please?
Yes. This plan, we have always planned institutional housing within Heritage Greens. This plan needs to move forward for us to complete Heritage Greens. We have two parcels already committed to those folks. We don't have a commitment unless this plan is moved forward.
And those parcels were?
P3, that's the two-story building for people with disabilities. It'll front on that new Harmony Green. And the other will be on P6. And that's a 32-unit proposed affordable housing for seniors, Section 232. And I'm sorry, there, whoops, we'll get there in a second.
Any other questions? You want to wait to see the picture of that? P3 and P6?
Just clarification. I want to make sure I understand. You've heard comments from the council about P1 and P2 being single-family.
Yes, sir.
And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you are saying that is not part of the plan that you wish to see approved?
Correct. Our desire, our wish, is that you approve the plan that the Planning Commission unanimously approved, and that's P1 and P2 as a transitional zone with the very limited uses contained in the land use chart. That's our first desire. I might have to pow-wow with Mr. Hackworthy about anything else, but we came here to talk about that, and that's why we understood the recommendation.
So you have no set plan of action if the council wants P1 and P2 to be single-family? You want to?
I would be a listener.
Okay.
My action would be to listen, and if you vote it, we'll roll forward and see how it goes.
All right. Did you get a photo for Pam of, is it a map you're looking for or a photo?
Can you see that up there? Unfortunately, the laser pointer doesn't show up on your screens.
P6 and P3.
Right. This one up here on the easel here, P3 is this parcel here. So LR is now limited residential, and that's the parcel we have designated for our people with disabilities right here. And then P6 is up here. It's this whole parcel, but a part of it is this section right here. And that's a 32-unit building, a three-story building.
So if we would make an adjustment to P1 and P2 to be single-family, that would impact P3 and P6?
It doesn't impact those parcels. It does, it makes me wonder whether the viability of this plan can succeed.
With that, P1 and P2 support in your vision and plan, townhouses, condos. What I don't want to see is, I don't want to see a three-level Section 8 house up there.
And I agree with you. Our neighbors don't want to see that. We've heard that loud and clear. And if you look at the use chart, we've dialed that down to be limited to one story, limited to apartments three-plus or elderly. And we can hand out these new land use charts. But if you look at the P1 column, there are very few things you can actually build there.
I'm okay with that, but I don't, that's what I, that's my concern. And, you know, is there something I'm missing here? Because we've got all sorts of maps. Is there an updated one, or is that as it?
That's it.
That's the correct map, but I just amended the land use chart to be consistent with Mr. Darnold's.
Thank you.
Let me express my annoyance that we don't get these updated maps ahead of time, but I guess you do the best you can. Are there any further questions for Phil or for anyone else from Bright Keys? Or are we ready to move on to, be ready to move on to some public comment? All right. Thank you, Phil. And as soon as you can get your technology safe, we're going to have people begin to come up with that. So, all right. What I'd like to see then is that we'll alternate. You can choose how you come up. The question was asked to me, can I give my time to someone else? And I guess my decision on that is yes. If when you come up and it's your turn to speak, if you want to say, I want to give my three minutes to someone else, go ahead. As long as they get up to the line in time and there's still time remaining, they can have whatever's left. So if there's anyone that would like to come to speak in favor of approval?
I give her an out of favor.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition?
Wait, wait.
Oh, you didn't get, well, get up there. State your name, please. Your address.
All right, I guess I'll take my.
And we're going to time you to be under three minutes.
All right, sounds good. My name is Joe Allen. I live in Heritage Greens at Ten Kinsman. My wife and I moved there because we wanted to live in a traditional neighborhood development with mixed uses, and we support Plan 10. I feel a little bit like we're on a 10-mile stretch of highway here, with Bright Keys at one end and people in opposition at the other end. And I feel like Bright Keys has gone nine miles down the road. There hasn't been any meeting in the middle. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the compromises that have taken place prior to us getting together today. Because Bright Keys has made significant changes to the plan you've seen, and we've all put a tremendous amount of work into it. Bright Keys, one of the things, Quick Trip, no gas station, was in opposition demand. Removed from plan. No four-story buildings. Removed from plan. Limited commercial space, commercial space limited. 5.6 acres or up to 7.9 with flex lots. This is a considerable.
This is a considerable reduction to earlier plans. Opposition demand, further limits on commercial uses, commercial uses limited. List of uses shared with members of the community and approved by the majority of homeowners in Heritage Greens. In addition, there have been further uses that have been limited in P1 and P2 by the Planning Commission and we thank them for their consideration. Move commercial away from Red Cedar Canyon. Change reflected in Plan 11. Now, a small number of Red Cedar Canyon residents are open to commercial and have discussed some limited commercial near their lots, but I understand as of tonight that now they're only looking for single-family. Building heights adjacent to Red Cedar Canyon must be further limited. That's been done. They're limited to one story, but potentially two stories now with this, with these changes. We've had a lot of dialogue. We've had a lot of conversations about this. You know, it's a struggle for me because I think a tremendous amount of work and labor has gone into finding common ground. They need a commercial driver because the market is off some fifty percent in new building permits in the Twin Cities right now. Fifty percent of their market opportunity went away for single-family housing, which is what they're proposing to put there. I trust in our developer to do what's best for our community to move it forward so that I can live in a community that was promised to me, a mixed-use development. And that's what I want. That's what was promised to me and that reflects something different from that that puts my property values in my future as a resident in Heritage Greens and as a resident of this community at risk. You're all stewards for the community. You're all elected to that position and I really hope that you listen to those concerns and consider continuing to move forward with the current site plan because I think it puts us all in jeopardy. I see developers in other parts of the market walking away from development. Martin Farms in Wright County is an example of that. Developer decided to walk away, went back to the bank. Those lots are being sold to other developers who are valuing the properties at a lower dollar amount. Traditional neighborhood developments are valued, valued fifteen to twenty percent higher than the cul-de-sac neighborhoods.
It's expired.
Please approve Site Plan 10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jody Hawk and I live at seventeen Heritage Greens. I happen to live on the south side of Heritage Greens. I live very close to what's being proposed here. I am in support of Site Plan 10 and I did want to point out a few things to you that I'm not sure that you're aware of. The binders that you have in front of you that are the black binders were made by those residents who are in support of Site Plan 10. Those images that were used throughout that presentation were images that we went out and Scott, went out and took throughout different neighborhoods to give you an idea of what we as homeowners invested in when we chose to move from many other areas. I don't know of too many of anybody who moved from Hudson to live in this neighborhood. We all moved from, a majority of us moved from the Twin City area and came across the river and this is an attractive neighborhood that will continue to attract new homeowners as they look to move into Hudson. My husband and I weren't looking to live in Hudson. We were looking for that type of neighborhood. So different approach. I did want to tell you that on those binders, we also have the information from the survey or the petition that we did of the homeowners that we met with that live in Heritage Greens. We met with eighty-five of them. Seventy-six of them do support the plan. There were six who do not support the plan. So that's over ninety-three percent of the homeowners who live in Heritage Greens do support this plan and we're asking you to move that forward. We're concerned about the discussion that's going on tonight, that again, we're changing it. One of the things that I spent a lot of time listening throughout this process and attending numerous meetings that had both Red Cedar Canyon, those in opposition that live in Heritage Greens and Bright Keys in attendance, and one thing I listened for was to ever see if I heard anybody who lived in Red Cedar Canyon along those property lines say that they did, were not aware of this when they built their homes there. Because we built three years ago and the plan that you see with the commercial right up against Red Cedar Canyon was the plan map that I saw when I built my home three years ago. Some of those homes have gone in since we built and so I just want to point that out. I've never once heard anybody say, I didn't know a commercial was going to go there when I built my home. So we hope that you'll support our plan.
Thank you. That is six minutes in favor. Would you like to hear the other fourteen minutes in favor first and then we'll hire the other side or do you want me to rotate them? What's your pleasure? Rotate them? Let's have a few people that are on the other side come up then. You can hold your places in line if you really want to. Go ahead, sir.
My name is John Engel. I live at one oh four East Canyon Drive and as far as Plan 10, can I live with Plan 10? Yes, I can live with it. Do I want it? No. What I want is single-family homes behind my single-family home. But like we've heard tonight from the developer, that it would be very difficult. Does the developer slash landowner have rights? Absolutely, they have rights. But what it comes down to is the residents that have to live there and it cannot be looked at any other way than that. With that, I hope that if you do decide to pass this plan, that it is amended for P1 and P2 for the single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheila Engel and I live at one oh four East Canyon Drive. I would like to shed some light on some things tonight that may seem hard to believe, but all of us in this room tonight have one common goal and that is to see this all come to an end. The ending which you are being asked to decide on tonight, it can go many different ways and that's where we split. My home is less than thirty feet from the proposed Bright Keys development. I have been to numerous meetings and have been vocal about my concerns and although my concerns have shifted in the past months, one thing has remained clear. I am looking out for my family and my neighborhood. I am a strong supporter of what is being called the alternate plan. I am in support of this plan because I feel it is the best compromise from both sides. Bright Keys has said many times that they need more than their original four point four acres of commercial so they can thrive. We have conceded to that and we have kept the commercial acreage that is in their plan. So what we are left with is what is right for the residents? What do the residents need? And that is lower building heights and single-family in P1 and P2. It is my belief that this would satisfy both communities whether for or opposed. This can do no harm to residents. It only serves to promote harmony. If you should pass this with these changes, I believe we could all go home satisfied.
My name is Elaine Martins and I live at one oh eight East Canyon Drive along with my husband and our three children. Our home is on the corner of East Canyon Drive and Red Cedar Pass. So our resident is the closest home to parcel P2. The proposed BK development on parcel P2 is no more than like fifteen to thirty feet from our actual residence. So, and I believe all of you have this and this and if you don't, I can pass it around, but it's essentially from my backyard. That being said, I feel like our voice should be heard when it comes to parcels P1 and P2. We would be more than satisfied with single-family homes on P1 and P2 and I know that there's going to be someone else that's going to speak on single-family homes being able to sell in our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Okay, we're just under three minutes for that side, I guess.
Hi, my name is Stacy. I'm opposed to.
What's your last name?
Stacy Helders and I live at one oh six East Canyon Drive. I would be probably H2 in from the corner. I'm right behind P1 and I'm very close to P2 and I would like to say that we would just ask you to please consider single-family homes back there. We have talked and compromised on four point four commercial acres and moved that up. We're okay with most of Plan 10, but please consider single-family homes on that one point five four acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Miller. I live at one fourteen Dunbari Pass and I just want to say that I do welcome the commercial element in Heritage Greens. I want to get that straight. We did all move into this residential area knowing that there was going to be this commercial element. What is upsetting is to see the extreme expansion of commercial. And so if we are going to compromise and allow this expansion of commercial, I think it is fair to listen to the residents and look at the P1, P2 and get that single-family home request in there as another compromise from Bright Keys in exchange for the compromise of the increased commercial. So I do want to touch on a few other points because I do think that the set of land uses has gone much past the intention of a PRD2, which is supposed to be type B1. And just a few very specific examples is the kennels or animal boarding, the veterinarian clinics, the clubs, lodges, exterior storage. These would be very unappealing to live next to and this is not what I bought my home to live next to and I would ask that gets retracted as well. And then just a few points about signage. I do think that some of the signage points are more reflective of a business district, not a residential district. So I would look at removing the things like electronic message panels, removing the sign along Hanley Road and also removing any internally lit signs except for the sign along Highway thirty-five.
Twenty, that puts us at just under five minutes total for that side. That's probably a good place to stop. Council, you want to start in again on the other side, hear more people that are in favor? Before we do that, let me just comment briefly if I could. Danny, can you help me on this? But I think there's been some confusion about the animal kennels and veterinary clinic. On the defined land uses chart, neither of those, neither boarding kennels, animal kennels, veterinary clinic, none of that is allowed on P1, P2, P3, or P5. That was changed several weeks ago at Plan Commission.
They also require conditional use permits. We would look at what the impact on the neighborhood would be if something, if that type of use would, in the commercial areas, correct?
In the commercial areas. There'd be this whole process again of public hearings before they'd go in the commercial areas.
They are included also in the flex, so, you know, under the designation of the flex, particularly on the east side next to Highway thirty-five, there's a possibility those uses being located in that general area. But not on, but not on the limited, but not on the limited flex areas that are designated in P1 and P2. So you're correct, Mayor, they're not included in that particular, in on those two particular parcels.
Thank you. So just to review our process, we were going to set aside twenty minutes to hear from those in favor and those opposed. We heard six minutes in favor and approximately five minutes opposed. If there are more people that want to speak in favor, would you come up to the podium again? And we'll ask you to limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
Hey, Dean.
Yep.
I know Ramsey wants to say something, so he might want to get that microphone.
Uh. Danny's got it. Al, Danny, that one.
My, my name is Ramsey Lee.
I'll be an interpreter. My name is Ramsey Lee.
I've been a resident of the city of Hudson all my life.
I just graduated from University of Wisconsin Whitewater with my master's degree. With economic drivers comes opportunity.
Opportunity for extension to give more people with disabilities freedom of choice.
An opportunity to give people with disabilities a freedom of choice.
With this P10 proposal, I admire the work of Bright Keys in my city and ask that you please approve the P10 proposal not for me, but for the future and the continued growth and economic success of the city of Hudson.
Well, I hope I remember. Did you catch that? He thanks Bright Keys and the city of Hudson for their support in this proposal up to this point and that this would provide housing not only for people with disabilities now, but for people in the future as well. I don't think I got that verbatim, but thank you.
And I ask you to approve the P10 proposal for continued success, not based on property lines, but continued success of the community. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the proposal?
My name's Kathleen Allen. I live at Ten Kinsman in Heritage Greens and I purchased my home in Heritage Greens with the idea that I would have amenities such as mixed-use commercial, senior housing, developmentally disabled people living there. I thought that was an asset and I'm afraid now that it might be jeopardized. Site Plan 10 allows that to continue, I believe. I don't have anything against single-family homes in those parcels that we've been debating. However, we have a great number of single-family lots still in our development that have weeds taller than me and dirt piles also taller than me and that it makes me wonder why we feel that any builder, which we don't have now either, we don't have any builders left in Heritage Greens, why anybody would come in and build on those lots. So I fear that if we don't get a more broad sense of what could go there, that will fail and I think that the people of Heritage Greens have actually the most to lose. I think the developer will carry on. I think that Red Cedar Canyon will carry on and they'll have their development as it is. We, however, will not and I think that is my biggest fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Veenendall and I live on sixty-eight Promenade in Heritage Greens and my husband and I chose to build in the spot we did because we knew it would be close to a commercial area that we could walk to, we could take our kids to. I'm not the kind of person that's comfortable at all standing up here talking in front of this many people, but I feel really strongly that my neighborhood is in jeopardy here and if this does not pass, I don't know what could happen to my neighborhood and that scares me. We know that single-family homes aren't selling right now. We need something to move our neighborhood forward, so I really urge you to pass it as it is. I think we need to put some trust into the developer who really knows his field and what he's doing, understands the market and proposing what he thinks will succeed in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, all the people in the council for coming here and helping us with this tonight. My name's Penny Goodbo. I live in Heritage Greens as well. I live very close to the commercial on the park, the Signature Park, and I moved to Hudson to live close to a brother and family from Florida and I also lived in Stillwater most of my life. This is my eighth home or ninth home owning and moved to Hudson into Heritage Greens because I lived in an area in Stillwater that had the market connected to it as well. I want to move forward. I'm very for this Plan 10. I'm very, very respectful of everybody's needs. I, however, believe we've given a lot of opportunity for things to be brought up before this point and I hope that tonight we can discuss the things that were passed with the Planning Commission. I do respect. I do respect all of you for your opinions, and just wanted you to know that I really love Heritage Greens, I thank our developer for sticking with us, and I'm really excited about the market, and I think everybody will like it if they give it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Veenendall, sixty-eight Promenade, my wife just spoke. I don't think that we should second-guess the Planning Commission. They looked at this in great detail. We came up with a lot of compromise that's been discussed, a lot of meetings back and forth, and that plan, in my opinion, is the best plan that we could come up with. We have a lot of empty single-family lots in our development. I've got four on my right and probably three on my left, so we do not need additional single-family lots. And so I ask you to go with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. They worked this through and came up with a good compromise.
Thank you. I count us at about thirteen minutes on that side. I think we'll switch over. Are there more people here that wish to speak to the council that are opposed to approval of the Plan Commission recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, I should say, members of the City Council, everyone here.
Could you introduce yourself?
My name is John Laws.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm at one oh nine Deerwood Court, and I'm a resident of Red Cedar Canyon. My primary reason for being here this evening is to ask you to take a look very seriously at the alternative plan. The Planning Commission did not have the opportunity to really give it full consideration. I think that P one and P two, as they've been advanced as single-family, would be an appropriate compromise. I think if we all ask ourselves three questions. Number one, what would we want next to our home? Number two, what's going to improve the housing values of both Heritage Greens and Red Cedar Canyon? And number three, what's going to improve the overall condition of the city in terms of the people that are going to be attracted to mixed housing, and we'd like that area, we'd like the commercial, we'd like some of those things to happen? How are we going to key in on those possibilities? We want people to work together in the community. This has not been the case as people have looked at these compromises. And so I would strongly urge you to consider single-family for P one and P two. I would ask you to oversight very, very carefully P one through P five. And I would ask that you consider the original plan to look at the whole idea of allowing the development, the commercial development that people need. I'm going to say one, one last thing, and that is, we're in a housing bubble. Every developer is struggling. There are other developers that chose not to come into this development because of the various usage that was there. They are not those kinds of builders. So mixed-use is difficult to do. I recognize that. I think a lot of other people do as well. So I'd only ask you to be cautious in your approach, be detailed in your approach, and ask the developer to come forward with a little bit more at the end to forge a good compromise. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Badlow. I live at one hundred East Canyon Drive in Red Cedar Canyon. I am opposed to the amendment, but have since had many considerations. The document, to me, strikes me as it misses a lot of the asphalt because there's green up there, so I just wanted to make that comment. But there's been a lot of talk about revenue drivers this evening, and as you make your consideration, I think that revenue drivers are an important, we are in an economic time that we haven't seen for quite a long time, and this builder, this developer is proposing things based on his, on this economic time and his financial woes. So I, I think that we need to do something that is going to sustain these communities for the future, the future for our city. I understand, as the mayor said, this is a pilot, but let's take a look and consider the times and build an appropriate development that is going to sustain for all times, not just for our economic uniqueness that we have in the housing market and the economy at large right now. We are slowly moving away. My recommendations this evening, if you so choose to approve this amendment, I would strongly ask you to consider, as many others have, to put only single-family homes into the properties adjacent and lining Red Cedar Canyon and Heritage Greens. I would also ask you to strongly look at and consider parcels P five and P six. There hasn't been a lot of mention, but we, if we look at the sustainability of the residents and the large debt that their association has, and their yearly annual fees are triple of what they are for Red Cedar Canyon folks, and the proposals this evening are going to cause a great deal of financial impact for residential fees that would have normally gone into to sustain some of the development that these people haven't seen. And thirdly, CR Hackworthy talked tonight a lot about the unpredictability, and that's where I'm coming from. I think that this is a large departure from two thousand and two. We all thought, this body, thought that the two thousand and two plan was smart, and it probably was smart based on that economic time. And now here we are, several years later, looking at change in those times and making a large departure for a very unique and changing market. And I want you to look at that and look at the future. And if we go back, someone already said there's a lot of builders that are not building in it. Hans Hagen, if you've gone through Hans Hagen, Red Cedar Canyon, the gentleman is booming. He's building, he has multiple townhome and multiple single-family dwellings in construction right now. I don't understand the difference from this developer to that developer, but it seems to me that he's attracting people that seem to like that old neighborhood style. We talked about that right from the beginning. So thirdly-
Ms. Badlow, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if, when people give their addresses, if you could please let us know which development you live in, just it's, it's not always clear. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mary Yakub. I live at one five Ford Dunbarry Pass. I moved from Hudson to Hudson to live in Red Cedar Canyon. My position on this matter has always been to be a voice for the community and those most affected by the Bright Keys application. With the current Bright Keys plan, some Heritage Green residents would get what they want and more, or less, what they bought into, and thus are happy. But what about those that didn't get what they bought into and feel as though their homes will forever be devalued based on what might add up in their backyards? After many iterations with Bright Keys, neighborhood meetings, emails, phone calls, and even door-to-door efforts, we came up with an alternative plan that satisfied an overwhelming majority of the most affected residents. Total commercial acreage in the alternative plan is unchanged, which was a major sticking point with many residents. In return, Red Cedar Canyon residents simply wanted a buffer from the now highly commercial layout of this development. This buffer would consist of single-family homes in P one and P two along Tribute Avenue, where there are already single-family homes adjacent to those lots. Furthermore, it represents only one and a half acres of a fifteen-acre project. Seemingly, this is a small request considering the enormity of the project and the hundreds of residents who call this place home and would now be content. You will not find any homeowners in favor of the Bright Keys plan who are closer or even as close as a residence along East Canyon and Dunbarry Pass. To touch on what Valerie has said, as far as selling single-family homes, there is nothing more local than Hans Hagen Homes. Since December, Hans Hagen has sold seven single-family homes, opened ten more single-family lots, and has six more purchase agreements this summer. As far as townhomes, they have sold fifteen since December and have opened ten more lots. Our request would not only satisfy Red Cedar Canyon, but also assist in Heritage Greens' dues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Badlow. I live at one hundred East Canyon Drive in Red Cedar Canyon, and I've been listening to everything tonight, been looking at all the emails over the last several months, and I think we've come a long way in terms of moving towards a plan that's acceptable to both sides. And I think what I can see, you know, I can live with Plan Ten if we have the single-family residential in lots P one and P two. I think it would be a good compromise. But one of the things I just wanted to point out, last meeting, Mr. Putnam presented some illustrations of some buildings that have very nice architectural design to them. I think they had a lot of aesthetic appeal, and I would like to see, if this plan is passed, I'd like to see some measures put in place where there would be conformance to that architectural design in order to maintain a good appearance for the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, excuse me, before you start.
Yes.
Our time is almost equal. I've got pretty close to equal. How many more people are here that wish to speak in favor of this proposal? Could you raise your hands? A few? Okay. Since we're even, this would be, and we're actually a little bit past even, this would be a time that we flip back. Do you want to do that again? Is it your intention to go back and forth? Okay? Anybody else wants to come up to speak in favor? Come on up.
Is this our last round?
Well, before you do that, let me just ask the council. You've heard thirteen minutes pro and thirteen minutes and twenty seconds against. Do you want to quit right here, or do you want to hear some more? We talked about twenty minutes each side, but, you know, things get redundant after a time, I mean-
I think we should let the people speak.
Okay.
I mean, to the twenty minutes, if there's people that want to speak.
Sir, let, let's hear, let's hear some more people then that are in favor.
Okay, my name is Matt Youspin. I live at fifteen Promise Boulevard. I'll try not to be redundant because I could say everything everybody else said, but we all have our opinion what should be on P one and P two. But the bottom line is, we need that Plan Ten, now eleven, to be passed to get this neighborhood finished. Otherwise, what you're voting for is to put single-family lots there or townhouses, which we already have townhouses sitting empty. We have plenty of single-family lots that are not being sold, so why put more there? Let's put the commercial in, let's get our development done. Red Cedar Canyon talks about our, our dues. I don't really know what business it is of theirs, but our dues can be whatever that we want them to be. Our dues are a little higher because we have less residents and because of the market. You help us out with the commercial, that'll bring in more people, our dues will go down. It's a win all the way around. I just want to point it out that we do have townhouses sitting empty, so why build more? We have single-family lots. Why, why put in more? This plan was, was discussed with Red Cedar Canyon invited. Nobody showed up to voice their opinion on, we want single-family. All of a sudden, they show up at this meeting, we want single-family. And to me, they're just making a joke out of this whole process, and, and it disgusts me. So thanks for your time, thanks for your effort, thanks for being diligent and patient with us.
Thank you. And thank you all for being civil and courteous to each other, and let's try to keep our comments on the issue and not discuss other, our other, other neighbors. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Hugh Gwynn. I'm an attorney in Hudson. I've lived here almost all my life, and I think the mayor, at the beginning of this, hit on the, the basic difference here, and that's one of philosophy, of where you live. When I grew up in Hudson on Third Street, a few blocks north of where Scott lives now, we had neighborhood groceries up on Pine Street, down next to the school. We went and played on the cinder lot, which didn't have cinders on it, but everybody still called it the cinder lot. We had another lot north on Pine Street where we'd go play baseball over by the railroad tracks. We had a sense of community and some commercial with mixed-use. There were duplexes, there was an apartment building down on Second Street. I think there were six or eight apartments in that building. You grew up here, you know what it was like also. And I think the, part of the difference is going back to that sense of neighborhood and community with sidewalks, a place for people to walk, some commercial area where you can go take care of some of your business or have a destination to walk. I represent twenty-two owners of townhouses and/or single-family vacant lots. The townhouses are all in the executive row area, so they're a little farther away from the commercial, but the commercial is still a, a important part of the whole development. I think it's a concept that hopefully the council will buy into. You know Mark Putnam's reputation, you know the things he's done nationally as well as in the Midwest, and I think this is, has the potential of being a premier community within our community. That being said, it has to be economically viable. If Bright Keys had come in with the original plan, there would have been commercial right next to Red Cedar Canyon. They've asked for some changes in that, and that's opened up the door to this discussion. Nobody said from RCC that they didn't know that there was going to be commercial near them at the time they moved in, which is not to say that it should be rammed down their throat. I don't think it has. I think CR and Phil and Terry and Mark have made a lot of compromises. I'm sure it is going to affect their bottom line, but they're still willing to go ahead with it. And I'd like to urge you to support the plan that came out of Plan Commission. There's been a lot of discussion, and I support that plan and my clients do also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there still time for me?
There is. Two minutes and fifteen seconds.
Hi, my name is Molly Seibert, and I live on nineteen Founders Greens, that would be in the Heritage Greens neighborhood. And I grew up in Hudson and have loved living here, and moved into Heritage Greens, very excited about the mixed-use. I grew up on Troutbrook, so very different neighborhood styles, but the Heritage Greens, very excited about the potential of having the ability to walk to some commercial places with my, with my children instead of always getting in the car. And again, you know, I feel like I'm reiterating, but I can't stress enough the fact that single-family is not selling the way that one would hope, and we have to do what's going to be best for our neighborhood. And I'm very concerned that if Plan Ten doesn't pass, that our neighborhood is really going to struggle, and that would not be good for the city that I've grown up in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I squeeze in one?
You can.
Thirty seconds?
You got it.
Hi, my name is Sherry Marnell. I'm at fifteen Founders Green in Heritage Greens. I, as well as my husband, are both Hudson High School graduates, proud to be back in Hudson and love the Heritage Greens development. All I need to say is I support everything that all the supporters have said, and I just really want to make sure that you guys are taking all that in consideration, and I know that you guys will. So please, if anything, if we can approve the plan tonight, we would all very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move over to, are you-
Against.
Against? So I see, are, is that five of you that are in the row? And we've got about six and a half minutes left, just so you know. Go ahead.
My name is Matthew Pevan. I live at one oh sixth East Canyon. If you saw this photo, it's the house in the middle here. I can argue that Parcell's P one affect me the most because arguably I live the closest. I'm in opposition to the proposal as the Planning Commission has presented it to you today. I'm in favor of amending that proposal to include single-family only on Parcell's P one and P two. It's been said that members of our Red Cedar Canyon and HG haven't met in the middle. One can argue that they have. My response to that is simply, I moved into Red Cedar Canyon. I have a right to protect my community, I have a right to protect my family, I have a right to protect my neighbors, I have a right to protect where I live. And I feel single-family houses on Parcell's P one and P two are the most logical uses of that land, and protect my family accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Kubik. I live at two oh nine West Canyon Drive in Red Cedar Canyon. My name is Jim Kubiak. I live at two oh nine West Canyon Drive in Red Cedar Canyon. I live a long distance away, and I'm, as I've mentioned to other people, I'm not visually affected by that. If they build a four-story building there, I wouldn't see it. But I am affected because I am a member of the community. And I do want to make one remark that's aside from this. People have said that everybody got communications. I have never received, received one communication from Bright Keys as long as this has been going on. And it's another point of interest, as I believe Mary and Valerie mentioned, from my driveway, I can go down to the end of the driveway on the cul-de-sac, which is not a, the cul, the collector road, I can see four houses being constructed right now. If I look the other way, there's at least eight townhouses under construction. So, there is a housing market in this area. It may be different, but it's happening. What, what I've heard through all of this is we're, we're down to a point where there's an intersection between Red Cedar Canyon and Heritage Green. That's where all the discussion has been focused tonight. The homes that are most affected, I believe, are conservatively worth one point eight million dollars. And that's a lot of property for individuals to own and to be, in their mind, the value undermined. As I've been thinking of all this, I have a really quick story I want to tell you. Last year, my wife and I went to Iceland. But things that people hear most about Iceland are the Blue Lagoon, volcanoes, geysers, glaciers. But there's something very unknown there. The continent of North America meets the continent of Europe there, and they're constantly pushing together. And yet, two continents are pushing together. There's no chaos at the point. You can walk between North America and Europe. You can walk right across that divide, which I think is right where we're at. We ought to be able to figure out how to put residential housing where these two pieces, these two developments come together. That's what the discussion has come down to. Nothing more, nothing less. And it doesn't seem to be unreasonable for that to happen. And when I looked at the map, I was over there again today and looked at it. There's a, there's a green called Harmony Green, which is the buffer zone. It's aptly named, and it ought to be, be used as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christine Skrude, thirty Founders Green, and I'm actually from Heritage Greens. And I'm strongly in support of the alternate plan. There's been a lot of emotion in here, and I understand that as much as anybody. But I think if you cut through that and you actually look at the maps, it's a good compromise from the 2002 plan to the one that the developer originally proposed. Single-family, I think, is perfect for that area. We've left everything else in there. The alternate proposal isn't about not moving forward. In fact, it's anything but. If, if we were interested in not moving forward, we wouldn't have taken this time to come up with a different plan. So, anyway, I'm strongly in support of that. And quickly, since I probably can speak about dues since I'm from Heritage Greens, we are in a lot of trouble as far as that's concerned. And I would like to hear more about how those three greens are going to be funded. I understand that there's going to be a surety to put them in. However, we're being told that they're going to be maintained by the commercial. As far as I know, there's only a bank coming in. And what's going to happen? Is the bank going to fund all of it? I don't know if that's something Phil can come back up and speak to, but I just don't want it running back through our association, which is already deeply in debt and having trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got about a minute and a half left.
Hi, my name is Mike Johnson, and I live at twelve Founders Green and Heritage Greens. I just have a few questions that maybe, again, when, if Phil comes up, he can clarify. I want to know if this does get approved, when will the sport court and backstop come in? And how are we assured that that's going to happen? Because we've heard before that it's going to be in, and it's never happened. And the timeline on the pool and how we're going to do that. The reason I question a lot of this is because I've spoke with Phil recently about the Gerard project that was approved in, in front of this council. And there was supposed to be a hundred thousand in upfront association dues. Well, now he's saying they're talking to council and trying to change it to a user fee, and I don't understand why they're trying to do that. And I'd just like to say I'm in support of the alternative plan, and that's all I have to say. And maybe Phil can answer those questions.
My name is Joshua Miller. I live at one one four Dunbar Pass. I live in Red Cedar Canyon. So, I just wanted to go through, I, I do support the alternative, alternative plan. But going more specifically into the plans, when we were first presenting this plan from Heritage Greens back in April, there were a lot more specifics on those maps. There were buildings. There were, you know, proposed parking lots. There were, you know, suggested spots where trees would go. Being very close to the commercial area, I live actually now where the green is on that map, on the other side in Red Cedar Canyon, understanding the lighting and understanding the signage that's going to go in there, and also just the architectural type. I'm sort of with a gentleman who spoke before who said, you know, it'd be nice to understand the style and the type of architecture that's going to go in there, which I think probably should have been, or will be reviewed at Plan Commission. But just holding it to a, a level of respectability and moving forward with high-quality, you know, infrastructure. I'm definitely for having commercial in the area. I'd love to walk to a business to have ice cream or coffee. So, that's not a problem for me. But it's just making sure that the lighting and the, the way that looks is appropriate for a residential neighborhood.
Thank you. I think that's a good place to end. It's more or less equal. Thank you to all of you that came and for your comments. What's your pleasure?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this an appropriate time?
Yes.
Who can tell me, this 2002 plan for Heritage Greens, were these homes in Red Cedar Canyon already there?
No.
When that plan was developed? No. So this plan was developed before those homes built up against P1 and P2? Okay.
I can ask one, a follow-on question. Were the people that built in Red Cedar Canyon, was that part of their information packet when they actually purchased that property? Or was it something you found out later? If anybody can answer that.
What was the, was the question? Did we have disclosure at the time that we purchased our home?
Correct.
In 2002, I called the City Fund or the Hudson, Wisconsin office after receiving brochures from Heritage Greens, hand taken homes and the city. And I was told specifically that there would be single-family homes adjacent and bordering, and hand taken was specific and absolutely was adamant that single-family homes would be across from Red Cedar Canyon in Heritage Greens. We were told that there would be limited commercial development. Four point four was designed. I, I did get that City Fund, one called 2002. That is why we purchased our home.
Thank you.
Danny, can, Danny, can I ask?
Before, before we go forward, Danny, will you speak to that?
I probably know that plan better than anybody, and I can't believe I advised somebody that there's single-family homes where that four-point-four commercial area was proposed.
Danny, can you explain to me the P1 on this land use chart? Height limits on parcel in stories? One story.
One story.
P2, one story.
Correct.
What are you, what are we looking at putting there? Or what are they looking at?
Well, as the use chart, as the use chart proposes, you go back to P1, column P1. Uses, there's ten uses that I listed in my comments.
So you have...
Okay, P1 and P2. So on P1, uses that are marked in green are the uses that'd be permitted. Those are restricted to ten uses. In P2, there's some additional uses that would be permitted, which are more commercial in nature.
So we're looking at apartments, three units, three-plus units, single level?
Correct.
Okay.
And the limit was on parcel P1 to a maximum of ten units. On parcel P2, to a maximum of six dwelling units if it goes to residential use.
So there's no towering, three-level apartment with multiples besides this obviously assisted living?
That's correct.
Which I have no objection to at all.
There's, there's no three-story building proposed on that parcel. This might be a good time for me to make one clarification, if you indulge me, because I expressed my annoyance at, you know, getting a new use plan. There's only, there's only two, two things that change. Will you point out the differences so everybody's clear? The only differences was that under P1, apartments three-plus units and apartments three-plus units elderly should have been marked green. They were not. Now they are. Under office, business, and professional, under P, parcel P1, should have been marked conditional use permit. It was not marked conditional use permit. Now it is, or should be. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
That was the only two changes.
Those are the only two changes from what was in your packet on Friday.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
And they were changes that really came out of the discussion at the Plan Commission was about that there'd be apartments there. But the, the use chart that we put out to you on Friday didn't have that. And when Danny talked with the developer about that, you know, in fairness, that was what our discussion at the Plan Commission was. And so that's why we've changed this chart to reflect what was under discussion at the Plan.
What does three-plus mean? How many, many they can fit in there?
They can fit ten. Oh, three-plus means, our definition of multiple-family residential is three-plus dwelling units in a structure. You have one-family residential, which means one or a single family. You have a two-family residential, which is our nomenclature, or a duplex, or a twin home. If you have three or more dwelling units in a structure, it's a multiple-family residential structure in Hudson by definition.
But it seems like you guys did your due diligence on a, on making sure that you met the sto, the height and that it will come after, anything else comes back.
The height limitation was volunteered by the developer of one story.
And anything else comes back to us with a conditional use permit?
No.
Not on P1 and P2. They're restricted to a one-story structure and those uses. That's all. Are there other questions, Alan?
No, I think, you know, from my understanding and what we have to decide is whether or not we want to make P1 and P3, P1 and P2, excuse me, whether we want to use that as single-family or go with what we recommend from planning with the one story and with those ten commercial uses that we have.
I think I'd be all right with that. I mean, I'm not, it's, it's not going to be the eyesore of, of a big, huge apartment, is what I felt the concerns were. If it's a, maybe apartments are throwing everybody off. Maybe it should be called flats. I think they call that in Ireland. And I wouldn't object to, as it is right now, a single. I certainly, you know, I'm going to move to accept alternate Plan 10, and we can start discussion on that.
Okay. Now, alternate Plan 10 was greatly modified by the Plan Commission. So if, what's, what's before us tonight is the Plan Commission recommendation. Plan Commission recommendation. And you made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
So his motion does not include Danny's modifications?
It includes all of, all of Danny's modifications.
Okay, I want to make sure it is. I'll second it just to get the discussion going.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
And then I'd like to start the discussion.
And that motion does not include all the, basically, it says that P1 and P2 stay as they're defined.
Yep.
That they're... That's the motion. Scott, what are your thoughts?
We've recognized the motion does not include P1 and P2, single-family. That's an important point. I think that although no one has deliberately done this, I don't believe, what we've been going through is a process well-known to sales and marketing people, is the presumptive close, which is that if you have a proposition for you which has the useful and simple answers of yes and no, and you start talking about the P1s and the P2s and the flexes and the limited flexes, pretty, pretty soon, you forget the no. You're just talking about what form is the yes going to take. And I don't think that we've ever discussed a just flat no to this proposal. What, what would happen if, if we said no? I mean, something terrible? I don't think so. I think that the developer would have time, the city council would have time to thoroughly analyze the situation instead of doing it under the heat of a blowtorch, which is what we've been doing here, and come up with a more workable plan. We have got so many unknowns that have been voiced tonight on the part of council members, on the part of both sides, pro and anti, that I think that, as the mayor said the other day to me, this is like watching sausage being made. But then you at least get some good tasting sausage. And I don't know that we're going to wind up with that at the end of this process because we simply don't know. I mean, I, if, if I challenge anyone here to say that they fully comprehend everything, every ramification of this proposal if it were passed tonight, I don't think anybody can. I think that's a very poor way for, for the city to enact long-lasting ordinances or planned use developments that are going to outlive most of us. We can talk about trends in the market today. I'm acutely aware of those as an investor myself. But they change. And to say that we need lots of rental units today because, well frankly, because a lot of people are moving out of their foreclosed homes, but they have to live somewhere. So rental is hot right now. Big difference between Hans Hagen, who I heard speak just last week, and other developers is that Mr. Hagen basically doesn't build a house until it's already pre-sold. And that's why he's in financially great shape. And he saw the demise of town homes back in August. He said it was exactly August of 2002, 2004, excuse me, that their sales just plummeted and they knew that market was over. For us to rush into any kind of judgment on this, I think is, is a mistake. Developers get high profits because they take high risks. And I think that's just the American way, and I'm all in favor of it. I think that we are in the process of here, here of possibly, possibly, the city assuming some of this risk. There are already lawsuits that have been filed. I think there will probably be more. I don't think that I'm protecting my neighbors and the taxpayers of Hudson by putting a smack dab in the middle of, of a civil dispute that's resulting in litigation. I think a no vote, just a simple no vote, would mean that everybody gets to cool off and start talking and at the end of some period of time, come back to us with a workable plan that doesn't have dissension the way this one does, that doesn't have people wondering, well, what is the impact of that? Because we're wondering that right now. You're wondering that right now. I think that to say no is to do no harm to our citizens, which is the mandate I have, which is to protect my neighbors and my citizens, citizens in my district. I empathize with your situation. You're reacting to a change in, in market economics, but that cycle will come around again. And I don't think we should be make any, making any decisions based on relatively few conversations with the Plan Commission and the city council when it's going to affect the most important investment you're probably ever going to make. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Question. On the P1 and P2, how many residential lots are in those two sections?
Five.
Five.
Well, Danny mentioned there's five if we were to do the Heritage Greens matter.
Well, go ahead and answer the question, Danny.
If you do the typical density that's common in Heritage Greens, there would be up to five residential lots, single-family.
So we're talking about, the discussion back and forth here is about this section of five lots, right? Whether or not they should be commercial or whether they should be residential, five lots, right?
Don't, don't misunderstand the situation. Single-family doesn't exist there right now. That was approved for a commercial area.
Exactly.
Let me, let me reiterate that or maybe say it a different way. After all this discussion, one of our options is to say no, and we'll go back to the 2002 plan. Now, I've talked to a lot of people... Now, I've talked to a lot of people and there are still people that think the two thousand and two plan is superior to what we've come up with over the last couple of months. But I think the number of those people has gotten to be fewer and fewer. That's my opinion.
The two thousand and two plan is commercial in both P one and P two, right up against the Red Cedar Canyon lots we're talking about. I disagree with Scott. Um, I don't think we're that far from an agreement. And I think to say no and go back to the drawing board, I think would do a disservice to the neighborhood and the people who've worked hard. I think when you're hearing from people as they want this resolved, I think the, the easy thing might be for us to say no. Just go back and do some more work and come back to us later. I think that would be the wrong way to go. I'm gonna, and I know I seconded the motion that was to get this on the table, but there's one possibility that I've not heard discussed. We hear P one and P two being grouped together. But as I look at P two, um, P two seems to be significantly, um, and maybe it's just the map, but it looks like it's more distant from those homes. It, um, it's bordered by Tribute Avenue, correct? On a, on a large portion of the perimeter of P two. And I'm just wondering, I'm just going to throw it out as an idea. Um, is there any way that there'd be a willingness to compromise and say P one would be single family? And P two could be approved, um, as a planning commission had designated it.
That would be as flex?
As flex. This transitional housing that we've heard about, as I look at it, it, it would border the road. It would back up to, I think, the side of other residential lots. It's just a thought.
Well, no, no, let's just stop right there because we had the public comments. So I'm, I don't want to be rude to you, but no, we're not going to do that. The question, and let me clarify my answer to your question. Could we do this or would this be a compromise? What we're about here is not trying to compromise between different citizen groups or between the developer and different groups. We're trying to decide what's best for the long-term interests of the entire city of Hudson. So at this point, it's really, it's up to us to decide. We aren't settling a dispute between different people. We're trying to decide what is the best way for this part of the city to develop for the long term. You can modify it any way you want to. We can modify it any way we want to that makes sense. And what you proposed, if you can get a second to it, it can be a, it can be an amendment to, to the motion. But you have to make it as a motion to amend to do that.
And we have a motion and a second on the table.
We do, but we can amend it right now.
My thought being, um, it's in everyone's best interest that this project is successful. Obviously, it would be in everyone's best interest if all the residents in Red Cedar Canyon were also happy with the results and pleased with their new neighbors. That being said, you know, I see P two as being across the street from Harvest Green and Harmony Green. And being less of a, a visual, um, impediment to those homes that are backing up to P one and P two. And I think it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable compromise.
Are you looking for a second or are you asking?
I haven't made a motion.
Are you asking me or accept that?
Do we need to take this up?
No, you know, here's, here's the thing. I've, I've tried to do this. I mean, here's parliamentary procedure. There's a motion on the table. It can be amended at any time. Make a motion to amend and I'll ask for a second.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be whoever made the original motion. It could be somebody completely different.
Can I just ask one more question? The P two is a half an acre. Point four is six acres. P one is one acre, over a little over an acre, so.
So I guess one question, is it, is it big enough to do anything?
P two is the one you want to do single family. Is that correct?
No.
P one would be single family, P two.
P one, okay.
The larger portion would be single family. And P two, which is on the southern end and borders Tribute Avenue would
Would stay the way.
Be transitional housing as the, um, or as a planning commission.
Okay.
Limit, or the.
So I'll ask Denny, uh, from a planning perspective on one point six acres, is that two lots possibly from the Heritage Greens people? Or what they have for single family?
Yeah, well, it's.
A little over an acre.
Well, you, you have about a one-third, two-third proportional. So you got five lots. You're looking at maybe three lots, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Is there anyone else that has further comments?
I have a question. So your thought on that is that the homes that are next to P two are distant. Tell me that again, please. The, your thought behind going with P two is?
P two just seems more removed from the Red Cedar Canyon lots. And it, it is across the road from Harmony Green. It runs a, it's bordered on three sides, um, if you will, by the road. It has a, just a small portion that is kind of butting up against those, um, those Red Cedar Canyon lots.
How many homes are on the other side of?
It looks like there's.
Is it four?
Three.
Three?
One, two, three.
I understand your question, Pam. You're asking how many single family lots abut parcel P two from Red Cedar Canyon?
If we would, yeah, if we would make that, that change, I, we've seen photos of, from backyards and how they're, how they relate to the, to these parcels. How many, is it one?
In regards to P one, you'd probably get three or four single family lots.
I think she's asking how many homes in Red Cedar Canyon back up to P two.
Well, backing up to P two, there's one. The dotted lines to the left designate the lot lines.
Okay.
So here's parcel P two that fronts Harmony Green. This is a single family Red Cedar Canyon lot that is adjacent to both P two and P one. It's the only lot that's adjacent to P two. P one is up here. That's one acre. And it has, again, the same lot adjacent to P two.
A silence filled the room.
Well, I'd like to amend our motion.
I hear a motion to amend.
Um, approval of the phase ten plan with the changes that have been incorporated, um, by Denny. And with the one change that P one be restricted to single family housing and P two remain as limited flex.
We have a motion to amend the motion that's on the table. Is there a second to that motion to amend?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion on the amendment.
Could I ask for a definition of flex and limited flex? Because as I understand it, flex and limited flex both have the opportunity to be either residential or business. Is that correct, Denny? Am I?
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Okay. Who decides if it's business or if it's residential?
Well, the, we have a defined land use chart that has a specific list of allowable uses on P two. Denny came up with a different terminology for that. And what did we label that now? Limited flex.
That was terminology of the developer, but that's an acceptable terminology. It just differentiates between P two and the other flex lots.
So who gets to decide if it's business, commercial, or if it's residential?
They have it, they have the option.
Who has the option?
Developer.
Okay, so if the developer wants that to be solid business, it's going to be solid business, right?
Full cycle, yeah.
But one story.
One story, correct.
Still restricted to one story. It's half an acre.
Just wanted to make sure I clearly understood that.
Um, and I might point out too, that at the plan commission, we modified the cafes and restaurants that, that would have to come back for a conditional use permit. Now, further modifications of that sort, if that was what your question is, will they need to come back for further permission for specific uses? That would be accomplished by putting a CUP designation on this use chart for other things. Like for example, retail shopping is just go ahead and build it if we approve this.
Well, it's, it's not go ahead and build it. They still gotta come back, get plan approvals and.
Well, okay, but it won't, it won't be over the zone.
Well, may I ask a question about P two then and the conditional use permit? When, uh, let's say a cafe or restaurant, um, doesn't make it for whatever reason. And we've seen a bit of that lately in Hudson. And, uh, gets out of their lease and, um, a man with a video store operation wants to commit. Then it has to go back to the plan commission again and back to the full council and we go to talk about conditional use permits all over again, correct?
If it's required to get a conditional use permit, correct.
So we're now, as the city council and the plan commission, in, it put into the position of micromanaging every store on this property.
Let me answer first and then let's hear Denny's answer. The only conditional use permit requirement on P two is for cafes and restaurants. So in your analogy where the video store failed and something else came in, only would it come back here for conditional use permit if it was a restaurant going in. If it was first, um, a real estate office and they failed and next it was a shoe repair and they failed and, you know, next it was one of these other uses, a barber shop, and they failed. And none of those situations would they come back again. But if it was to be.
Right, because they're not conditional use permits.
Correct. So we wouldn't be micromanaging except we've asked to have more control over cafes and restaurants because that can be a higher traffic. I mean, it can't either be a walk-in or it could be something completely different. Any further discussion on the, on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, last chance. Ready to vote? All in favor of amending the primary motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, the motion on the table has been amended to make P one, single family residential. And leave P two as the defined land uses chart, limited flex. Is there further discussion on our amended motion? Lee? Alan?
No.
You ready to vote on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
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 I hear four ayes and two noes. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is from the finance committee. Thank you all for coming. Next item on our agenda is applications for operators licenses.
May I recuse myself?
The staff recommendation. Mr. Morissette asked to be recused from this item. The, uh, recommendation from the plan commission was to split this into two parts. The first part was to approve the list that the staff recommended approval. And there are twelve of those.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation for the twelve, uh, regular, eleven regular operators licenses and one temporary license. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries and those licenses are approved. The recommendation by the chief of police was that we should deny operators licenses to three of the applicants. Finance committee recommends denial of the operators licenses under Wisconsin statutes one twenty-five point oh four five A one and one twenty-five point oh four five B. Based on the record that there were a number of prior convictions for violations of laws related to alcohol that are substantially related to the fitness and ability to properly perform the job of serving alcoholic beverages. Do we have a motion to deny these applications?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those applicators or operators licenses are denied. Next item on our agenda is review bids and consider awarding a contract for Prospect Park Restoration Improvement Project. The recommendation from the finance committee was to approve.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, number six, under finance committee, review and consider final draft of Parks and Public Works Director Job Description. And consider advertising for the position. The finance committee broke this into two components. One is the consideration of our amended job description or position description from the public works, for the public works and parks director position. This has had input from staff, from, um, several others, including our city engineer and engineering firm. And I understand public works committee has looked at this and recommended approval. The finance committee looked at it tonight and recommended approval. So on the position description itself, I'd like to take that as a separate item.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion on the position description? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Position description is approved. The second part to this is the question of should we fill this position? Now begin a advertisement and recruitment process to fill the position. The recommendation from the finance committee was to, uh, direct Devon to begin advertising. To, uh, you gotta help me with what we came up with. It was sixty-five, uh, salary range of sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand.
Just to begin advertising immediately or begin the process.
Begin the process.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second. Any discussion?
There was a lot of other information that came out as finance as far as funding sources, um, which I think need to be discussed.
There was a position budgeted in the two thousand and eight budget. We weren't sure for sure if it was going to be filled or not. But at sixty-six thousand with benefits, came to about ninety-seven thousand. There are still funds available that would cover this position through the remainder of the year. Obviously, two thousand nine funding would have to be included in the budget.
And I believe you said there was fifty thousand dollars currently in the budget for the remainder of the year that has not been spent.
A portion of these funds were, um, when we settled the co- union contracts back in January, February. A portion of these funds were designated to cover whatever shortfall we had there. But there's at least fifty thousand, fifty-four thousand, something like that remaining.
But it's not fifty-four thousand of the sixty-five thousand.
Of the ninety-seven.
It's of the ninety-seven thousand. So it's a little more than that.
Correct. And as I noted, most likely depending on how quickly this process, it would probably be October first, just guessing. If all goes well, that you'd have someone in this position. So we'd be looking at three months of the year.
In the way of staff recommendation, I turned this over to Devon for the working up of the position description. And I've asked him to make a recommendation on the issue of whether we should fill this position.
As I've explained before, my main concern in all of this is the issue that we have, again, in no deference to Tom Zulley. We have an individual who is within the bargaining unit, who is supervising the bargaining unit members, who is potentially disciplining them. And that is very difficult from a personnel standpoint, from a collective bargaining agreement standpoint. We could, we have not fortunately run into any issues with it, but that could come up at any time. We could very well have a grievance filed by someone saying, you know, my supervisor's within the union and that's just not standard. within the union, and that's just not standard procedure, so that's, you know, I feel very strongly, we need someone outside of the union, whether it, you know, we're within this position to be supervising, and that's outside of the union.
In addition to Catherine serving as our city attorney, we have Steve Weld generally work with the city on labor issues, and Catherine spoke with Steve.
Yeah, I did call Steve to get a little more background and information on that issue, and he said what you're left with is really no one in a position who can effectively discipline. So, the city has no person who can effectively administer discipline within the department. Said the reality is, when you get into that situation, you don't know when it's going to happen, the pressure is just so great to have a union member disciplining another union member, just plain doesn't work, and that's, you know, based on his experience in situations where it has come up.
Catherine, could not the city administrator discipline?
Well, you're setting up, it just doesn't work very well. I mean, he's not in the department, he's not observing the situation, and so, he's not there to hold the employees accountable, he can't be there. That's what you have a manager of the department for.
My recommendation, as you recall, when I first put this item on the agenda, was that after looking at the operation of the two departments, considering the fact that we once had these as a merged department, we then ran them as two different departments, each with a department head, and now we've merged the two departments back together again, that I feel like it's, it's large enough, there are enough employees, the payroll for the two departments together runs right at a million dollars a year. The budget for the combined department runs over $2 million a year, and is a significant portion of what we do every year, and so, my recommendation to you is that I think we need to fill this position now. I understand the argument that it's costing extra money, and I gave you the handout that's on your table tonight that lists the salaries, benefits, essentially, this is the total personnel cost for the two departments together, going back for the year 2005, 2006, 2007, and then to date for 2008. It looks like this. And you can see that, going back to, say, 2006, you know, we're running about 80, I think Devon said, right now, this, this was as of June 30th, but if you ran this out right now, we're running at about 80 or 90,000 dollars lower on the total personnel costs, and this isn't rocket science, it's probably what everyone expects, by not having that, that key top management position filled. One of the questions that comes up here in my mind is, is everything in this position description that we've all agreed on, is it all getting done? If it is getting done, what things that the people that are doing it, you know, what, what were they doing before they started doing all of this? In other words, if there's plowing streets, mowing the grass, you know, all of those things are, you know, if they're all getting done, is there somewhere that we actually have extra manpower here? Because all of those things still seem to be done, and...
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you would...
I wasn't necessarily directing that, that was a rhetorical question.
Like to answer it, though.
Go ahead.
Okay.
And my, my, one of my proposals might be, if we fill this, maybe we should have a hiring freeze there for, for some time, to say, look, we've proven that we're fully staffed in the field, because all the work in the field is getting done, and if all of these things are currently getting done, I'd be surprised, but if they are, then, you know, we've got a, a labor relation situation here that is pretty unworkable for the long term, I believe, and requires a solution. Maybe what's required here is a, is a hiring freeze for Public Works and Parks after we fill the top position. And with that, go ahead and answer.
The question you had, although rhetorical, is an important one, because it is unfortunately couched in such a way as to cast a pall over the morale of the department that I am so closely aligned with. This is the second time that this has happened, I don't think you intend this, but it just, it just comes out that way, that morale was disturbed within Public Works the last time you discussed Public Works personnel. I think it will be disturbed again after your comment of a couple of moments ago. Our people run a very finely tuned Public Works, I'm not speaking about parks, I'm not involved with parks. We have got exceptionally good employees, long-term employees in Public Works who know their job. They don't need anybody standing over them with a whip or any other disciplinary measure to make them do their jobs, and the reason why these jobs have been getting done without a director is because of that, because they know their jobs and they do their jobs, and they're darn good people. And I think we need to recognize that fact, so I am answering your question by saying, these jobs get done because we've got good people doing them.
All right, floor's open for a motion on the second part of this. We could postpone filling it, we could, we could move forward with the finance committee recommendation.
Didn't I, I saw moved, didn't I?
Did you already move for the advertising part?
Yes. I'll second it.
No, no.
That was just the job description.
It was, it's broken into two things.
Oh, well, so moves.
We have a motion to, for the finance committee recommendation to fill the position. Is there a second?
I'll second.
With the specified hiring range?
With the, can you state what, what we recommend?
65 to 75,000 dollars was the anticipated hiring range, depending on qualifications.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to direct at Scott or Tom, either one would like to answer.
Is Tom here?
The park, the park, park board, you know, discussed, kind of going back in time when the, when the departments were separate and had different heads, and one of the things that they said is, and they agreed with completely, that the people doing the work are just fantastic. They felt like the, the two different department heads, having two department heads in two departments, that there was a lot of consistency with, you know, future planning and, and future visions and future planning, it just seemed to be a lot more support overall for the, the future plans. You've been here a long time, can you kind of talk about the two different, when there was a purpose in this position, when there wasn't, and the differences, if you see any?
I recall that at one time, there was a director over the whole city. And that seemed to work pretty good.
Okay, and in that scenario, that worked fair, worked fairly well?
Yep.
And it, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it, right now, what do you see, do you see things that are being missed that a director would help with, or comparing that scenario to the scenario I have today, what's missing from your perspective as a supervisor?
Well, I think just being the supervisor, the day-to-day supervisor is a full-time in its, in itself, just running the day-to-day operations. Then if you had another director, at that point, you could probably get, be available for grants and projects and, and bigger things like that, coordination of, probably the two departments would probably be better at that point.
Thanks, Tom. That's, and, and that's kind of what I heard with, on the park board as well, that what's getting done is being done in excellent fashion, and when they were looking at it, they're saying, some of the things that are missing are the person to take care of some of these, future planning, and the, like Tom said, the grants, and some of these other things that are, and the outside, how do you handle the union issues with non-union members? Do they go to Devon, or do they stay within the department, get handled by the department? So, those are the things I heard from the park board, saying that they felt that this position would be valuable, valuable to be filled. Funding is obviously a separate question.
Could I address that?
Please.
I agree with everything you just said, and I want to advise the council that I'm going to abstain from this vote, as I did before, because I don't know, but there is certainly a possibility that one of the people in the Public Works Department might apply for this position, and I would never vote no over a career change for them, that whoever that person might or might not be. So, I will not take a, a position yes or no, but I would like to just share with you and answer your, your, some of your concerns, where I am coming from on this. Public Works, and again, I, I can't speak for Parks, so I'm not going to even attempt to do so. It's been years since I've been on the park board. Public Works needs every penny it can get to take care of what we already have. You've heard a lot of, on another question tonight, about the current economic situation affecting Hudson, affecting our area, affecting the river valley. I was gonna put this graphic, well, I have it on my laptop, and I was gonna show it up on the screens, but I thought it was gonna be used for other purposes, so I decided to just give you this printout, which you can't see, but Alan can verify.
I can see it, see, just hold it up, there you go.
Okay. Chad, can you, here, whoops, I'm doing it wrong. Okay, great. This is called "The Mortgage Mess," and this is from M-N-M-S-N-B-C, and it's a compilation of every, it's done every May, it's a compilation of, of foreclosures in the United States as of April of each year, and it lists, it's a, it's a map of counties of the United States. Blue counties are in pretty good shape, the deeper the blue, the better they are. Red counties are in bad shape, the redder it is, the worse it is. And in the upper Midwest, you cannot see it because it's way too small, but I've shown it to Alan, in the upper Midwest, there is one county that is nice, bright red, and that is St. Croix County, one county, and that's us. The fact of the matter is, as we saw in our last council meeting, when we didn't have enough money to do the Public Works projects that we need to do, that we're, we're gonna be later on tonight looking at a revised sidewalk and got a repair list, because we can't afford to do what we really need to do, that we simply don't have enough money. And I find it difficult to spend $100,000 a year on a salary for a director who, I agree with you, and I agree with, with Lee, and I, I agree with the mayor, is needed long-term. We can't go on like this forever, but can we go on a bit longer? I think we probably can, and if I can put that money into mill and overlay, or sidewalk repair, that's what I want to do, and I'll tell you why. Because the economic picture has changed for Hudson. People moved to Hudson over the last decade, decade and a half, for several reasons, and we always talked about, you know, the charm of the locale, to say nothing of the charm of the people, and that's all true, but also, there was an irrefutable fact, which was that the metropolitan sewer district was ending midway through Washington County, and they weren't gonna go any further east. And so, developers and the people who bought their homes after them leapfrogged over Washington County and came to St. Croix County, specifically to Hudson. And that rising tide floated all boats, and frankly, we were very well off. Hudson always ranked as one of the top household income cities in the state of Wisconsin. That has now ended. We've all heard a lot about that earlier this evening. In my estimation, Hudson is now in the position of having to market itself more shrewdly, look better to prospective buyers, and deal with a competition that is new to us, which is, right across the river, Washington County has been opened up, Lake Elmo, by court order, has been opened up for development. We now have competition there that we didn't have before, and there's a sewer district there, so there's not that much reason to leapfrog over and come to Hudson. We have to make ourselves more attractive to people who frankly live in, or rather, work in the Twin Cities, most of the people who live in our area work in the Twin Cities. Another factor that's figuring into this is, if you work downtown St. Paul, where are you going to buy your house? In Hudson, which is very charming, or in Lake Elmo, which is really also okay, but Hudson, just in the price of gas to get to work and back, is gonna cost you well over $1,000 extra a year. So, that's a minus for us. I believe we've got to counter some of these minuses, the economic situation, the opening of competition across the river, we've got to overcome those minuses with pluses, and I think that, the plus that occurs to me is, we've got to make ourselves very attractive. We've got to make this city look as good as we can. We don't need to build new stuff when we aren't taking care of the stuff we already have. I need every dime for Public Works, for roads, sidewalks, I need active enforcement of our signage laws, of our, just generally, compliance laws, so that this city looks better than the others that prospective buyers visit when they move to the Twin City area. When they come to Hudson, they, I want them to say, wow, these people have got some pride here, and they take care of this city, these streets are, are great, this neighborhoods look terrific, there's no signs cluttering up that we already have ordinances against, but we don't enforce for some reason. And one of those things is, we have to look at purchasing or building a library and a public safety building. Now, it's been said by Betty and others, and she's absolutely right, we can afford, we have tremendous power of borrowing, we can bond like crazy, but we don't, we can't afford the operating expense, okay, because we can't people these new buildings, except in the case of the library, where we already have staff, and public safety and EMS, where we already have staff. I bring that up since, I want to draw to you a comparison. If you take the lower, the lowest amount, $65,000, plus the benefits, you were at $97,224 a year. If you were to spend three and a half million, let's say 4 million, because we've got about 500 grand coming in from the, the business bracket, if you, more than the NMC building cost, if you were to spend that to build or purchase a public safety building, that salary, with its normal increments of 2% per year, which is what we've always done, would pay for 47% of that $4 million building. Now, do I expect us to go for 20 years without a, a director here? No, I don't. We need one, I know that, I'm, all I'm saying is, right now, we can't afford it, and things are going well enough, and we are taking care of what we can, so that I would much rather have that money to put it into our streets and sidewalks, to make our city attractive. Those people whose homes are for sale that are not selling, I want them to get a satisfactory conclusion and be able to sell their home. I want people to move to Hudson and increase the tax base. I want the vacant lots and heritage greens to have buildings, houses on them, because yes, the land does pay taxes, but there are no improvements that could, that could taxes to us, and if there's nobody living there, there's nobody ordering the pizzas or going to the movies or any of those things. So, that's my point about not right now, doing this postponing, as the mayor said.
Good. Any other comments on the motion?
When you're saying about not doing it right now, based on your discussion here, you're not, you're saying not 2009, not 2010, I mean, if you, if you just say 2009 budget, you're talking about $50,000 additional this year you can spend on roads and, you know, things you just discussed.
Yeah, something else, well, you just brought up an interesting point, Lee, because we've got $54,000 left, because we used part of this money for giving our current directors and heads-up departments a 2% raise, which they were not going to get otherwise.
Could I interrupt you?
Sure.
Because we've heard a lot from you on the motion, before we have any more, could we hear from anyone else that wants to speak? Yes.
I want to clear something up that you said about...
Yeah. Something else, well, you just brought up an interesting point, Lee, because we've got fifty-four thousand dollars left, because we used part of this money for, uh, giving our current directors and heads-up departments a two percent raise, which they were not going to get otherwise.
Could I interrupt you?
Sure.
Because we've heard a lot from you on the motion, before we have any more, could we hear from anyone else that wants to speak? Yes.
I want to clear something up that you said about fifteen minutes ago.
Yeah.
And you made the comment that Dean, you know, made a comment that was gonna hurt morale within the department. I think there was a misunderstanding. Dean was not saying work was not getting done within the department. He was saying this five-page job description includes probably a lot of duties that are not being done. Am I wrong? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's how I took it. Five-page job description, if you can tell me, or if anyone can tell me, who's doing all this stuff? And who's overseeing our nearly two million dollar budget? I'll vote no. It's a pretty simple question I'm asking.
I can answer that.
Who's doing all of this?
Tom and I are, along with Debbie Andrews.
You could go down these items one by one and say, these are all being covered, because obviously, people think they, they're important and they should be part of the jobs. Who is doing them? And then...
Well, the job's obviously getting done, but we're not, we're not reprimanding.
I'd like to call for a question.
All right.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Abstention goes to the majority?
No, abstention, I mean, for the, for the purposes of motions here, um, it, it takes four votes to pass a motion whether there's an abstention or not. That's my, my reading of it.
Well, yeah, you need a quorum to make, to approve the motion, so you need at least four people voting on it, and the majority of the quorum.
I think what you're asking is, once we're down to five, does it pass three to two, or four, you know?
Abstentions always go to the majority.
Three to two. It's gonna pass, the majority.
If, yeah, the, if there's a majority votes for the motion, it will pass.
It would be as if Scott wasn't here.
Correct. You've got a quorum without Scott, so a majority of that quorum would pass the motion.
If two people abstained, we still have a quorum. If three abstained, we aren't voting.
So I, I do have one question for, with the...
Well, the question's been called, that's, that's, um, question has been called. Help me with this, Catherine.
Okay, I'm looking at my chart, yeah, yep.
The, the, uh, the...
So that you take a vote. End discussion or further debate of the matter? No interruption, or a second is necessary?
Is there a second to the motion?
For a question?
Call the question.
Call the question.
Second.
All in favor of the, uh...
Motion to fill the position.
No interruption is permitted, a second is necessary, it's not debatable, and it does take a two-thirds vote in order to end discussion. So all in favor of ending discussion, say aye.
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 Aye. Now we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did four people vote aye?
No, no, four people didn't vote aye and discuss, and to discussion.
You did not vote to end discussion?
No.
Neither did I.
Nor did I.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then we don't have a, a two-thirds quorum or a vote to end discussion. Further discussion, who hasn't been heard on the issue yet? Pam, what do you have to say?
I, I have a, a question that, we, we talked about who's taking care of these responsibilities right now. And if, I, I'm wondering what we're pulling Tom away from, and we're pulling Deb away from. And Scott, if you're, you're filling some of these roles, um, you know, I, I guess I have concerns about that, and, and how, how Tom and Deb are, are able to manage the, their, the jobs that they're responsible for. So I guess I...
You know, I, I cannot let it go to be implied that I said something negative about the Public Works employees. I think a tremendous amount of the job that Tom in particular and J.J. have done, when I took office, I looked at it, I made Tom the supervisor over both of those departments. I'd be perfectly happy with that going forward. It's just that I don't think it's a good long-term plan. Now, as all politicians, I'd love to save money in the short term and say that we cut taxes this year or something, but the long-term best interest of the city, as Tom said when he came to the podium, being the supervisor is a full-time job. Tom, who's the only one that runs our grader that we plow the streets with? You are. So it's pretty hard to be a full-time supervisor and being on the grader, being the grader operator. We've put the man in a nearly impossible situation. While he's grading, he's not supervising. And he came up there and said, this requires a full-time job being a supervisor. So we've asked him to do a practically superhuman thing, and he's been doing it. Credit to him. I give him great credit. All I'm saying is, it isn't a good long-term plan.
My question for the motioner, if you allow it.
Go ahead.
Is, we've discussed short-term funding and short-term funding issues. Would there be any consideration to say, this is, will be filled in two thousand and nine? For the remainder of this year, the fifty thousand will go into Public Works to handle some Public Works issues and underfunding issues we have.
Can we do that?
You can make a budget adjustment and do that. What I'm wondering though is, maybe you would like to ask Tom how much more he can get done this summer in addressing those kind of issues? Or if we would put those funds aside and possibly do it next year? I know there's a lot of stuff going on right now, but I don't know if we could do additional sidewalks or additional streets or anything, if there's plenty of that.
So you're saying if you have the money, you can't do anything with it?
Well, I think that's Tom, he's kinda, he's the guy in charge, but I just know it's July. So I'm not sure how much more we can do on repair of, as far as street repairs and those sort of things. Maybe if he can get some seal coating done, maybe he can get some crack filling done, I don't know.
Tom?
I think that's a very good idea. Currently, I think we have all our projects in place and kind of organized and, and ready to go. Um, but I just spoke with, uh, one of the asphalt repair companies today, and, and we went over a few things, and what would, that would be a great idea. Just take some of that money, just in some, um, scalded flex patch thing where we could do a lot of work up in the industrial street. It would be a great idea.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion?
That would be my request to amend the motion, to say we fill this in two thousand and nine and use the current funding for this year projects we can.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Pam seconds it. Uh, any discussion more on the amendment?
So you don't want to fill the position until two thousand nine?
I want to fill it in the two thousand nine budget, instead of the two thousand, remaining funds from two thousand eight. Use the remaining two thousand eight funds to fund some current needed projects.
And start recruiting in January.
We would delay till October or something, time it out so that, if that was what you chose to do.
Recruit, recruit so that they fill the position January first.
Approximately January first.
You'll start the recruitment process now?
For a January first start for the two thousand nine budget.
Well, we could, we'd have to time it out and see, because if you go too far early, then, you know, that is five months out, it is quite a ways out to be hiring, but we could figure that out.
Anyone else have any comments on that?
Could we time the job posting with the budget process, which starts in September, so that we would have a clearer idea of the money available?
That's what I'm saying, you'd probably start no later than October first for a January first start date, so yes.
And our budget would be set at that point.
Yeah. Well, it'd be set, set by November one.
But it's not contingent, you're not saying, if there's not money there, somehow we're not gonna fill it, just that...
You want to know that there's money there, if, before you do it.
My amendment is not contingent on, it's, it's to fill it in two thousand and nine.
All right, well, we've got a motion and a second to amend that motion again. Any more discussion on that?
I just think it's a mistake. I think we need to hire this position, get that person in place ASAP. We've got a two million dollar budget. I don't know why we're screwing around pretending that this isn't needed. In my opinion, it's needed, and it's needed immediately. Again, it's not a reflection on the current, uh, people, Tom doing the job. Got a two million dollar department, and it's, and it is not being supervised and managed properly, in my opinion.
Lori?
Question. We funded the job for the whole year, we're only going to be filling it for probably the last quarter. Isn't there already still?
No.
Some of it is, has been accounted for.
Those funds, oh, sorry, go ahead.
But aren't there some funds that are available, since we haven't hired that position?
That's what Deb is saying, we funded ninety-seven thousand dollars, um, utilizing forty-some thousand in wage increases, so there's fifty-four thousand remaining.
If, if, I'm sorry, if you...
Half a year, you basically have half a hundred.
If someone came in on October first, and this is just rough, you'd probably spend about thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-five to thirty thousand, depending on what you hired that person.
So there might be twenty-five left?
Correct, depending on...
If we hire it October first.
Could I address that point? Because you're talking specific amounts of money, let's not forget. The forty thousand of this was used to pay salary increases. And you're not, if you fund this for two thousand and nine, you're not gonna have that forty thousand, so where are, you, you need another forty thousand on top of that for the, the annual increases. Our department has had no pay increase for the, for this calendar year, until we stole some money from this unfilled position.
That also applied to the Public Works and clerical units as well.
Yeah. So you, you're talking more than, uh, ninety-seven thousand dollars.
All right. Anyone else want to be heard on this that hasn't been heard? Let's vote on the amendment.
Could you repeat that?
Yep. Will you read the amendment?
To use the two thousand eight funding for the position for projects and to advertise for the position to be filled beginning January first of two thousand nine.
So the first motion was to advertise and fill it October first. Now we're talking about filling it January first.
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I vote no. I heard three and three. Let's raise your hands. That's the votes, yes. Who voted yes? That's what I thought. I vote no. Amendment fails. Back to the original. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Abstentions? Did you say no, Lee?
I said no, because I want the amendment.
Yep. And did you abstain?
I must abstain, I abstained.
We've got four yeses, one no, and one abstention. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the June financial report from the Finance Officer, Betty.
I only need about twenty minutes for this.
Yeah, you got about a minute and a half. Excuse me, your time has expired.
Actually, there's just a lot of information in it. Um, there's no surprises. At this point, we're a little low on collecting billing, um, permits. Um, kind of expected in the economy that we're in, but, um, sometimes that picks up in July and August. And so, um, at this point, um, the only other thing that I have to expand upon is the investments. The investment income is way down. Um, we've been averaging anywhere from two to three, maybe even three-point-five percent. Because of the federal securities, um, having poor rates, I haven't gone long-term with them. Because of the economy hanging on an inflationary factor, I've tried to shorten everything up. So when doing so, the best offering is a C D at this point, and it's pretty hard to manage twenty-one million dollars in CDs. So I've had to pull in four million, um, to be current, so we can pay off the T I district. The remainder's been in CDs and, um, on some of the money markets. So right now, um, probably we will hit what's budgeted, but we probably won't get anything more than what's budgeted this year, so. With that, um, the other indications are, if you look at the ambulance, I want to point out their expenditures are down. They're running around forty-some percent. At this time, it should be around fifty percent. And we are having problems with some of their, um, accounting, with the, um, Life Quest collections, and we're working on that. Um, Sewer Fund is running a little high. They've had some problems with lift stations. And other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Any questions for Betty? Thank you, Betty. Next item is number nine, application of Hudson Hockey Association for a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to sell beer on July twenty-sixth, oh eight, for an alumni three-on-three event at eighteen-twenty Hanley Road.
Mr. Beer, recuse myself.
Mr. Birchel's recused. The Finance Committee recommended approval.
Move for approval.
Second, a motion and a second to approve any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The application is approved. Number ten, determined funding to hire a consultant to verify the findings of the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee report and proceed with facility layout recommendations and cost estimates. We discussed this at the Finance Committee. We recommended, um, preparing an R F P to hire that consultant to have them look over the findings, um, space needs analysis, and take it through some site planning.
Preliminary site selection.
Preliminary site selection.
Facility layout, correct.
That's what you said. With the money to come from, um, excess bonding that we did this year, amount to be determined after we get the R F Ps in, and we'll decide what we can afford to actually hire. Anyone have a motion on that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second for the committee recommendation.
The R F P will come back to you for review, and we'll try to get that done before the next meeting.
Discussion, Scott?
No, no, I was just, I was about to second, but Lori, you need to...
All right. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, Public Works Committee, got...
This is for informational purposes only at this time. We have discussed opening to the public the former landfill site on Cratley Lane. This is in North Hudson, but it's property that the city owns, to distribute to the public, uh, wood chips for mulching. Uh, we bought a chipper a couple of years ago, and we have been amassing a pretty good stockpile of wood chips, which are highly prized for, uh, mulching, especially around young trees in the fall. So our plan is to, uh, pending, uh, an analysis by, uh, Tom Zulie and, and Deb about staffing cost for this, but we would time it with, to coincide with the, uh, fall leaf drop-off. And that way, we could save money on, on the public notice, because we could put it on the postcard that goes out for the public leaf drop-off, which is free to the public each fall and spring. And all we need to worry about is two things. One, Catherine can help us on. First is, from Tom and Deb, how much would it cost to staff? We're talking only the first two weekends of the three-weekend leaf drop-off, because after that period, we're getting kind of late into the fall. People will, I've already made other arrangements. Catherine, we do need to know from you that this is, since this is public, uh, since this is city property, would we, our insurance cover, um, us there in North Hudson? Because we will be loading people's trailers and/or pickup trucks with...
Covers for the leaf drop-off, is that it?
That's on city, that's in the city.
That's on, that's on city property in the city. This is city property.
Yeah, I'm sure it covers city property.
Okay, that's all we needed to be concerned. So, information only at this time. We'll be coming back to you with a cost estimate, uh, in a month.
Any questions for Scott on that item? Next item is from the Park Board. Consider, consider revisions to the boat launch policy. Uh, Lee?
The, um, Park Board met, we've had a lot of requests coming in from, um, from residents that, you know, I'm a resident, I live in the city of Hudson. I like to launch my boat and take my trailer home. And currently, the, um, policy doesn't, doesn't allow for that. What I understand from the, the history of this issue is that there was a lot of illegal trailer parking going on. And this was put in place to basically say, well, if you can't launch it, you can't park it illegally. We've, uh, we met with, with Chief Jensen, we talked this over at Safety, it went to Park Board. And our, the Park Board recommendation is to revise the policy, basically to say, and you've got copies of this in your packet. When the lot is full, city residents who can show proof of residency within the city limits shall be permitted to pay the launch fee and leave, uh, leave the lot to park their trailers in illegal location. Uh, we went through a lot of different variations of that, based on, you know, how to support this, and decided that this policy, there's two pieces of this. The first one, we'd like to amend this. We're also going to take up at Safety a discussion of, if trailers are parked in illegal locations, what can we do, um, to entice people not to park there? Um, the discussion was with, uh, with the boat launch, if they see people that are parking in illegal locations, the, the call can be, they can easily call the police and say, you know, we see somebody who's parked in an illegal location. But the Park Board didn't feel that it was necessary to say, we're not gonna allow you to drive two blocks or three blocks, take your trailer home, and drive back. take your trailer home and drive back down. That the illegal parking is a parking problem, not a boat launch problem. So we wanted to separate those issues. Marty, would you like to add anything to that or not?
Well, Mayor, the staff recommendation is to approve the revisions. You've got revisions in your packet. Do we have a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second? Anyone have any questions for any other staff members? Are you ready to vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is update on projects. Tell us some good news.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Starting with the triple left turn, I did find, after going around and around internally with our structural engineers, I did find one structural engineer who had, basically, well, what the proposal is now is to basically deconstruct that existing sign base and then rebuild it to match the bolt pattern of the sign bridge. And that will expedite the process because we won't have to manufacture an adapter and, you know, monkey and worry about those warranty issues. And with that, we worked through it with Pember Construction Company, and they're willing to sign a change order saying they'll have this project completed by August first, two thousand eight. Make sure that was in there.
Congratulations.
So.
Oh, I'm serious. I want to commend you on finding an alternative way to get that done. So, good job.
Thank you.
With that being said, there's the Chrisview Drive Mill and Overlay Project, and that pre-construction meeting will occur this Thursday.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Chuck?
One real quick. Is everybody on Aldridge Avenue okay with the final product up there? As far as the final seating and sod that was put in their front yards?
Yes, yes. We, we put out notices, we talked to many people. So in far as the nine Aldridge project, yes.
Everything's okay up there?
Things, things completed and we're not aware of any other outstanding issues.
I do want to talk about the lakefront wall project very briefly. I would like to meet this week with Parks as well as your Public Works, just to, there's been some desire to modify the plant slightly to get that elevation of the upper part up a little bit. And if we do that, that has implications as far as accessibility there. So just looking for some direction or who I should be working with in, in regards to some modifications to that path. And if you'd like, I could certainly get into more details of that right now.
Well, let's get into the details right now. That means we're going to be, okay. After consultations with the Park Board and Pat Casanova, Randy Lau, and others, the question came, and I had Vinnie Darnold go down there and we looked at it together. At the north end of the Bituminous Path that's being laid, we asked that the finished grade level of that path be made at the elevation of six hundred and eighty-four feet above sea level. That is the elevation of the upper wall. So that would be flat level to the upper wall. The Class Five has been laid for that. That wasn't a problem, didn't really present any issues. That's at the north end of the park.
Yes, technically closer, if I may interrupt, is about six eighty-three and a half, so, so a little bit shy of that.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay. What, the issue in the design and the construction of this has been, what was the purpose of this project? Was it aesthetic improvements? Was it to provide an actual functioning seawall barrier? The Park Board, looking at it in its partially constructed state, wished to raise that so that that would act, act as an actual functional barrier to water. So that up to, say, six eighty-three, that path stays dry. Everything above it is usable park, everything below it is flooded. That amount of flooding might happen every year to a few years, but it wouldn't happen multiple times a year as, as currently been happening. On the south end of the park, we asked that the same thing be done. And our Public Works Department raised the manhole cover. All that needed to be done was lay in the Class Five, but there's trade-offs in doing this. We will be constructing a section of asphalt that's not ADA compliant. There are sections of asphalt pathway in the park already that are not ADA compliant. Not all of that park is, is ADA compliant. It comes to whether you can build everything at a one-to-twenty slope. Is that it, one-to-twenty? In order to be handicapped accessible for everywhere. Our goal is to have that asphalt path be six eighty-four, six eighty-three and a half, to be level so that it acts as a functional barrier. That's the goal. Okay? That was what I directed our engineering firm to do after talking with the Public Works Committee, talking with the Parks Committee. If that's not clear, or if someone here at the Council wants to send that back to committee work, so be it. But I think staff and those committees that have looked at it have been fine with that, and that's what I hope gets done.
Get it done.
As soon as possible.
Well, all of those things have implications. And, and that's why I want to be, make everybody real clear on, if we bring it up to that six eighty-four, we can certainly do that. But then, we have to look at, okay. Yes, it is true that there are areas of the park that are ADA compliant. But this is new construction and, you know, it's a little like building permits where you, you pull a new building permit, you need to conform with the new requirements. So there are options, there are things we could do out there, but they should be looked at and make sure that everybody understands those. One thing I'm concerned about, if we do put a trail that isn't ADA connecting those two, it'll lead right down to those steps. And, you know, I, I worry about, what do you call it, a, an attractive nuisance. And so somebody thinking that is ADA compliant, getting on that trail and potentially, you know, hurting themselves as a result of it not being ADA.
Well, it's.
All right.
Chuck, could I ask you a question about ADA compliance here? Since the, since this would be access to the lower trail, which has no retaining wall, it has no protective fence. You would have a person, let's say in a wheelchair, right next to the river's edge, and a wrong turn of the wheel, and they're in the water. That, to me, presents enough of a danger to maybe see if we can get away without being ADA compliant on that lower level. I don't know if that works or not.
You know, well, again, you would be taking them from an upper path and then turning them towards the steps. And again, we can, we can do every, any and everything that the city wants done. It's just a matter of making sure that one decision does kind of snowball into a few other decisions. And we want to make sure this park and everybody's happy with the end, the end product. And, because Tom and my area supervisor and Sandy were out there today, and I don't know if Tom has some thoughts as well tonight that we could get into, but it, that interconnecting path is a concern, and I, you know, I don't know if you agree with that, Tom, or?
We, we talked, there's probably a couple alternatives, either number one, not have the path connecting. We talked tonight, you could probably raise that lower step up a few feet, and then you could probably make that grade work. But that's going to be a little more cost involved and maybe a little more.
All right. So if we don't build that path, people are still going to walk down and it's just going to be a, I mean, you won't stop people from walking. We built a stairway to nowhere as it is right now. There's like five steps and then they just stop. And really, what you're talking about is it's too steep for a path. It'd be perfect for stairs, but, no. I don't understand the original design, but I don't see why we can't build that path flat through there at about six eighty-three and a half.
Well, again, well, we can, there is options, like not making the path. We could extend that wall through there, we could put steps between the upper and the lower path. We could put that path in there. Again, I just concern myself with, with an attractive nuisance. And I, I just want to make sure we're all on board with what's going to be built out there and that everybody's happy with the end product.
All right. So what Chuck's asking for is that, that he wants to get more voices involved than my own.
What's your pleasure here?
I'll be happy to meet with you, along with Tom, for Public Works.
And if the schedule works out, I'll meet with you also.
For perks.
Let's get that project done.
Yeah.
That's, that's seven hundred thousand dollars down there now. It's just, this is ridiculous. Okay, any other updates on projects?
No, is there any questions for me?
I don't hear any, I think we're ready to move on. New business, two thousand eight sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project as revised. We have preliminary resolution nine dash zero eight tonight. Special assessments.
We need to suspend, uh, move, move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Takes a roll call vote to suspend the rules. Any discussion before we vote? We call a roll.
Horsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
Motion carries. Rules have been suspended towards adoption of Resolution nine dash zero eight. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the resolution?
I'll move to, we don't have a motion.
There we go. Motion.
Yeah, move to adopt Resolution nine dash zero eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carries. Number nine B, review draft document of revised Hudson Area Joint Library Agreement and Proposed Capital Agreement. We've been having public meetings at six thirty AM on Monday mornings with the Board President, Village President, and Town Board Chairs, and myself, and representatives of the Foundation, Library Foundation. We've been meeting for a number of weeks now. We've broken the documents down into two parts. The first part is to amend and revise our joint library agreement, which currently was adopted in two thousand and three. We have had four municipal partners in running the joint library, and it's been housed at nine eleven Fourth Street in our current library building. The non-binding referendum last, at the last election, gave support to the idea of moving forward with the purchase of the NMC building and moving the library there. In order to accomplish that, a couple things would have to happen. One is, the current library agreement calls for no purchase of any property such as that until a major capital project agreement would be done as a side agreement. What we first did is opened up discussion of changes to the library agreement itself. We have made several, in our negotiations, we've agreed on several things. One significant one is a change in the, in the representation would, would, the terms would be from May thirty-first instead of when they were. Another change is a discussion of how the operating budget would be paid for. And currently, it's been paid for by assessed value. The current rate is eighteen dollars and fifty cents per hundred thousand of equalized assessed value. What that does is that as assessed value goes up, there's an automatic increase to the operating budget of the library. The discussion first, first took that from being totally assessed value to then a discussion of having it being half population and half assessed value to finally, the latest agreement is that it would be entirely based on population. And the rationale behind that is that people use the library and not the buildings. The effect for the city is to actually lower our portion of the operating budget slightly. The, you've got the amended most recent draft before you. There's a couple of other significant things that have gone on. One is that the impact fees that the city has been collecting now for about five years in this current agreement would go to the benefit of the city and not be shared with all our partners, to the benefit of the partners. And the thinking there is that they were collected by the city on city property, paid for by city homeowners, people like all the people out in Heritage Greens and Red Cedar Canyon here, all contributed to that fund. The basis of that was that our increasing population in the city is going to mandate eventually library improvements. The discussion was, should that money actually be shared so that the people in St. Joe benefit just as much by it? And ultimately, we decided, no, it would be, it would be just for the benefit of city residents. The second part of that discussion has been the question of, what about the fact that under the current agreement, anyone can drop out of the library agreement with one year's notice? In the new agreement, once we would buy property together, you'd be in for twenty-five years. And that there'd be a five-year notice. So essentially, you'd be in until the end of any bonds that were sold or so on. And with that, we, the city was asked to give up a right that we currently have. And that is that we gave money. At the time that we formed the joint library, there was two hundred and forty thousand dollars in cash in library funds. And we brought to the table the entire collection of the library, which is valued as a book value based on purchase cost. Its depreciation was valued just over a million dollars. That replacement value was valued at about two million dollars. Under the current proposal, the city would, would relinquish any rights to, to those assets. I should restate that. Under our current agreement, if we dropped out, we'd take all the cash and all the assets back as city cash and city assets. Under the proposal before us in regard to this amended joint library agreement, we'd be asked to give up the rights to that. And in the negotiation, what we've come up with is that we would get credit for the cash component that we brought in, in the year two thousand and three, which was two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and some odd change. So the significant thing for us is that as you look at the spreadsheets of what the cost will be for city, for the village, for our town partners, that we have around seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank already towards funding our commitment there, which depends how you want to look at it. Best case scenario with maximum proposed private philanthropy, our share would be about one point eight million. You could subtract seven hundred thousand off of that. The worst case, our component might be something on the order of around four million, three, just short of four million. And you could take seven hundred thousand off of that. That would be if the fundraising failed to exceed, say, the two million dollar mark. With that, we have pretty much concluded our negotiations and discussion on the joint library agreement. We have now moved on to the second document, which is the Major Capital Proposal. And you got a copy of that. That's in a very rough stage. It, it was, we, we first started with that a week ago. We talked about it again some more this morning. One of the key questions there is, should there be benchmarks to the fundraising before the municipal partners come forward with the public dollars? My proposal to date has been that there should be a benchmark to be reached before we even schedule a referendum for the borrowing on this. And the, the proposal as it stands, modified this morning, was two point seven? It'd be two million before the referendum, two point seven, another three entities somewhat agree to.
agree to before the bonds would actually be issued.
All right.
Right by is that?
That's-
And two point seven, that represents, um, but essentially was half of what they ultimately wish to-
For our-
Have assisted proposals set forth this morning.
For our purposes tonight, my, my purpose is to come back and to inform you of what's been going on, and I'd like your input, because this is all going to happen over the next few weeks, and I want to hear where you stand with it and get some guidance as we go forward. The non-binding referendum was based on the idea that it would be half private, half public. And so, this idea that we would have two million dollars of commitments, not necessarily cash in the bank, but two million dollars of pledged, pledges and commitments from existing foundations is, um, is one thing that I think we've all come to agreement on, that there needs to be something. And I think that the foundation actually gave us the two million dollar number, if I'm not mistaken, right by. That was, that was, that was a number from the foundation as something that they felt that could be achieved, um, by the first week in September. Now, just to review the timeline here with you also, um, the idea is that these documents that you had before you today, this amended joint library agreement, and then the major capital proposal, that those would be, have to be approved by all the town boards, village board, and our city council sometime in August. So it'll probably be back before you, I'm guessing, at our next meeting. If not, then certainly by the, by the second meeting in August. And that those wouldn't be approved then. And then, around mid-August, we'll get preliminary numbers, uh, for where our, um, levy limits might be. And on September eighth, we'll get a levy limit worksheet from the state. At that point, we'll be able to start to put the actual numbers in for what it would be required to go to a levy override vote. Everyone understand that the state law limits us for next year to an increase in our overall levy, tax levy, to two percent, or whatever our new construction is. We won't know what our new construction number is until we get it from the state. And we won't really get that until-
September eighth.
September eighth, we'll get kind of a final number.
We can make some preliminary estimates, but that'll be our final.
Correct. In order to get referendums on the ballot for the November fourth election, we need to certify it to the county clerk by September twenty-third. So the latest possible time for us to, uh, vote on putting this on the ballot is the day before. But essentially, my proposal to you is that because we have Labor Day the first Monday of the month, that instead of having council meetings on the first and third, we might instead have council meetings on the second and fourth. And the fourth Monday would be the time that we'd be, in time for us to put this on the ballot. And that way, you'll have the maximum time to consider all the options. So I guess we, that's, that's a scheduling issue that, without objection, I guess, that's what I intend to do for September. With that, are there questions about this, or do you have any guidance or input that you'd like to give?
The two million dollar in book value or market value of the inventory at the library, um, I understand it was a give and take situation, but, uh, we didn't get anything for that, other than the cash that we already had contributed. Would that be a true statement? Is that-
Well, as we went into this, and I call it a negotiation, everyone sitting at the table realizes that they cannot bind their council. So this was a proposal that I made.
Sure.
And if I can't get this approved, these, these will only happen if we can get unanimous approval by all the boards.
Sure. But my question is, if, if the depreciated value's a million dollars, or a million one, and, uh, we had contributed two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, the way I read the agreement, that money would, if it was disbanded or changed, we would get that back. That's our property.
We would get all the assets, all the equipment, the software, the computers, and the books. We would get everything. We'd, we'd take our marbles and go home again, and we'd be back to paying for the library the way that it used to be paid for.
Sure.
But we have a stronger, better library because of the joint library.
Oh, without a question. But the issue comes in is, I guess I was looking to say how much, you know, we got the cash back, 'cause we had put, I mean credited towards this. I guess that'd be a better way. I'm not asking. But do you see any way to get any of that, or is that the best we're gonna do? I mean, the city of Hudson put that money in, right?
City taxpayers did, um, to, in fairness, um, you know, there was a county funding formula in place for years before our joint library agreement, and so that taxpayers throughout the county who checked out books from the library system did indirectly, uh, help with our funding. So it's not exactly fair to say only city residents paid for that.
Then the next question I had is the, um, referendum question. We have to be pretty specific on the dollar amounts?
You have to be specific to the penny. We can do that, but it's, it's difficult because the timeframes are short. When, if, for the override question, you mean, on the, on the levy limit?
We're gonna say for the next twenty years, or the next, I assume we want to go as long as the bonds are out.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna say for the next twenty years, you're going to spend X number of dollars. And if all four parties agree, we would raise that. We, we can't have an operating increase without approval by all four, correct? Is that what I read?
Well, each municipality will have to make up their own mind how to deal with the fact that, for example, I mean, let's just take North Hudson. North Hudson's share of the operating cost of the library right now around seventy thousand dollars a year. On the new proposal, they'll be paying probably roughly double, triple that, pretty close to triple that. Their increase will be over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, under the two percent levy limit, that's probably all they get for next year is around a hundred thousand dollars. So they're, you know, that's for them to decide, but it's almost impossible for them to participate without doing a levy override. And that'll probably be the case for each.
But you are correct. If you do not specifically say in the levy override that it's for X number of years, then it's just for one year. So you have to specify ten years, twenty years, five years.
Actually, what the statute says there is, you have to say, what it, if it's for just the year two thousand and nine, or if it's ongoing.
Okay.
In our case, the question for us to decide will be, will we specify twenty years, or will it essentially be perpetual? You could phrase the question that it's ongoing, in which case it goes on without end.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one. Um, after attending this morning's meeting, the discussion was that we would potentially go to referendum when two million dollars was, what's the right word?
Pledged.
Pledged. It's late. Um, and that's, I guess the only point I like to make is that's very different from what voters passed in the spring. And so we need to recognize that we're going to the voters with something that is significantly more. We'd be looking at all the municipalities together funding seven point five million. We just, I think we have to decide as a council, is that the kind of question we want to go to voters with? Is that our best chance of passing it? It feels like a bait and switch. It feels like we said, well, the Library Foundation was gonna come up with five million, but now we're gonna cover seven and a half million of it. And I just question whether voters are really going to take kindly to that.
Well, they also have, that's why the, the question has to be so specific. In the spring, they made their best guess, based on the information available at the time. So now, if they chose, if they choose at this point to vote it down, they'll also be telling us what they think about the new proposal.
But I guess that's part of my question is, with the foundation coming forward with two million, are we telling voters that's all they're going to come forward with?
With the refer-
Around the hook?
With the referendum question, we have to do it that way. It, the referendum question has to state the full amount, because we don't know.
It does. It has to say that full amount, because it's not been raised.
Now, how, you know, I don't want to say marketed, or whatever you want to say, the, what happens external to that, as far as the, what the foundation does or says. But I mean, the question has to be specific. We can't, obviously can't pass a referendum question that says, we think we're gonna get this.
I understand that. I understand that, but-
Well, Lori heard some of my proposals this morning, and they haven't been accepted, but I, it, it is my opinion anyway, and I'd like your feedback on this, that, um, uh, there ought to be some further benchmark or some kind of a performance there that incentivizes the private philanthropy. Um, what, where we're at with it right now is that there'd be a two million dollar threshold, and that we'd ask for permission to borrow the rest. So that means we'd be asking to borrow seven point six million dollars. Now, remember in the non-binding referendum, it was laid out that we'd, you know, that there would be, um, municipal borrowing total of about, I think, three point four million, maybe. The intention is still that that would go from seven point six million borrowing down to that amount, but it would go down to there over a period of years as the private donations came in. The challenge here is that, once we've borrowed the seven point six million and spent the seven point six million, are the private donations still going to come in? I mean, are we going against human nature at that point? Because we will have bought the library building, remodeled the library building, moved into it. They've got their library. Do they still make their donation payments going out two and three years later? That's the question. One of my proposals was that we should have all the, the whole three point three million dollar purchase price should be raised, and that we use the private funds to buy the thing, and then we've got the bonding to back up to do the rest of the work. That has gone nowhere as a proposal. I suggested a dollar-for-dollar matching. If they can come up with two million dollars by the first week of September in private, that we ask for permission to borrow the seven point six, but that that money gets sort of distributed to spending on a matching. So they have the two million. We'd spend two million out of our seven point six that we had to borrow. Uh, when they raised another million privately, we'd give another million. That would take us up to six million, at which point I think we could probably buy the building and remodel it. And when another million came in, you'd do another, and so that it would be a dollar-for-dollar matching. The challenge to that is, once we borrow the money, we gotta, on municipal bonds, you've gotta use that money.
Within a certain amount of time, depending on structure, correct Eddie?
So, yeah, there's some challenges.
I imagine probably two years.
Probably two years. So that would shorten, under that plan, that would shorten the whole fundraising bit from a three-year plan right now down to probably a two-year plan. So you'd have to raise it in, you know, if we were to do my matching plan. To be honest, there hasn't been any real support for my matching plan either. But I've been struggling to try to find a way to, to do what Lori's saying, to protect the taxpayers, that we don't borrow and spend all this public money on what was supposed to be a fifty-fifty shared partnership. How do you structure the deal where we have gone to the voters for permission to borrow and spend our money, and maybe even front the money, but if we front the money, do we get paid back? Is this the kind of thing that a banker would front that money? On the, on the hope that it comes back? In other, you know, in other words, would they securitize the pledges somehow and actually give the money? And that's, we're, we're being asked to be in the position to be in a banker in a certain way.
We have a member of the, uh, library.
Yes, we do.
Bye, would you care to comment on this? Could you come to the microphone and?
I'm invited. I would be delighted.
Would you like to hear, I mean, it, it is late. We've been sitting in these chairs for three hours and twenty-five minutes right now, and some of us, four hours. Do you want to schedule this at our next meeting for further discussion? Do you want to hear it now? Do you want to have a break and come back and talk about this further? It's an important item. There's no doubt.
Seven million dollars, I think we ought to talk about.
It's an important item. I'm not saying it isn't. You want to take a couple minutes recess and come back and spend some more time on this? Is that a yes?
Yes.
I suspected as much. Let's recess for about five minutes and come back. We're on new business. Item number B, which is review draft document. I'd like to point out that there's a second item yet to come on this, which is consider retaining outside council. We could discuss the two together if you'd like, but for the time being, we've been talking about the process, the documents, and the request was to hear from Bye Barsonis, the vice president of the Hudson Library Foundation. Bye, you have the floor.
All right. I'm Bye Barsonis. I am a former board member in the town of St. Joe, and I got on the library board as a result of being appointed by the town of St. Joe as their representative. And then I joined the foundation board and have been leading this project, along with Susie Gilbert, Jeff Seis, and Holly Grubb, for the last couple of years. Um, I'd like to, um, to start by explaining the proposal that the foundation made to the communities regarding this project. And that proposal was that the foundation could raise fifty percent plus of the capital budget, and the numbers, as we're looking at them now, are five point four million out of a project of about nine point nine million, for the acquisition and conversion of the entire NMC building into a new joint library for the city of Hudson, village of North Hudson, town of Hudson, and town of St. Joe. That was the proposal. And we still believe and still live with that proposal. We've done tremendous work to refine numbers and talk about how this can and should be done. And an important, uh, risk issue for, for the project is, is the public philanthropy there? Uh, that was kind of the heart of the discussion that I heard a moment ago. And we hired a professional consulting, fundraising consulting organization, uh, one that's been in business for more than twenty years in the twin-city market, and has worked on a number of projects, including fairly recently, the Minneapolis Public Library. And they were, they did a feasibility study for the Minneapolis Public Library, and then they helped them raise what turned out to be fourteen million dollars. Uh, we hired them. They came into this market. They talked to the, to twenty-four, um, I'll call them va, uh, known, significant, uh, St. Croix Valley funding individuals and organizations, as well as some community leaders. And the proposition put before those funders was, can, can this, can the Hudson Area Library Foundation raise, uh, four point nine million from those sources, and then the other five hundred thousand is from national sources? And we gave those individuals that we talked to several exhibits, one of which, uh, outlined the, the costs of the project. How is the nine-plus million going to be spent? And the second one is, how is it gonna be paid for? And there was an exhibit that we showed to the, uh, And there was an exhibit that we showed to the people that we questioned of the timing of, you know, we're going to acquire the building at this, we're going to begin the conversion over this period of time, we're going to, you know, kind of have the fund drive over this period of time, we'd collect the philanthropic funds. And so it was very apparent in those materials that the money was not in the bank on day one when the project started. And so they were opining to whether or not we can raise money after the project has started. And the resounding response was, was yes, with the right people asking the right people, they're confident that this project, fundraising project can be successful. And they know that, that it isn't raise the money first and then do the project, but it is, this entire project is to be done under the timelines that we explained to them. Dean is concerned and has expressed his concern in the Monday morning meetings about, you know, why is there any incentive for anybody to give money if, if it's already started? And I think that, you know, is a minor concern, but it wasn't a concern on the part of those who are probably going to contribute over 50% of the funds to this project. That, that doesn't bother them at all. And when the lead gifts are given, then we have the steam, and when they're identified, then we have the steam to go out and pound for the smaller gifts to complete the fund drive. So, this is not a project that is free of risk. But, you know, we have consulted with experts, and, and these are very experienced experts, talking to people that they talk to, you know, multiple times a year about different projects, and advice that they've given to lots of solicitation efforts about whether or not it could be successful, and they have an extremely high batting average. So that is the, the strength of our conviction that even though the project might start, it would be, the philanthropy would not be diminished by that. The experience in this community raising money in the hospital, I think, is a really good example. The amount that they thought they could raise to begin with was far exceeded by the fund drive at the end of the day. And that's the history, that's the typical history in this community for, for well-designed projects that have proper people involved and have credibility among, you know, the big givers. When we formed the non-binding resolution, you know, we pictured for the voters the end game. And while our charts and tables at that time said that the ultimate borrowing would be 3.4 million, when we calculated the numbers, we used 4 million. So we had a cushion in that. And as we look at the end game today with the numbers we have currently, the, the end game is 4,170,000 as the aggregate ending municipal responsibility for this project. You know, that's 4,100,000 on a 9.8 million dollar project is, is, you know, noticeably less than 50%. The, the comment was made that it was, you know, somewhat misleading, or it was a bait and switch. From the beginning, the expectation was that the building would be acquired, the municipals would enter into a construction, I'll call it a construction loan kind of an agreement, which is a short-term facility that would be large enough to cover the, the aggregate demands for the project minus the expected collections of, of donations during the duration of the project. And, and while the theoretical maximum is the total project, 9.8 minus 2 million, or 7.8, that's the theoretical maximum, as you look at how those funds would be expended and the timing of that and the likely collections of, from the fund drive, the maximum outstanding at any one time would be, you know, is projected to be about 6 million at the max, maybe 6.2 million. And, and that's simply a function of timing. I think we explained to the voters that the worst case is, it's going to be 7.6 million dollars. That's the number that was just used a moment ago. That's the worst case, and that happens if we don't raise a nickel more than the initial 2 million. The best case, and likely case, is to be about 4 million. And, and, you know, will this be able to be explained to the voters in such a way that they can understand that? You know, I hope so, I think it can be. The cost per 100,000 of assessed valuation, the numbers we used in the referendum, the non-binding referendum, were 24 dollars, which was the average for the aggregate for all communities. And based on, when the funds, when the project costs were going to be allocated based on assessed value, those numbers work. Now we've changed to allocate based on population. And the numbers where I think the project will ultimately end up, everybody except the village of North Hudson is at or below 24 dollars per 100,000 of assessed value at the endpoint. It'll be a bigger number in the meantime, and we'll just have to explain to them, like we explained to the other givers, how the funds have to flow to make this project work. So, the foundation made a proposal to the municipalities to raise more than 50% of this project cost. Because we were aimed at a building that we didn't know existed two years ago in terms of being on the market, we, we knew, and the municipals knew, that the timing was not what, what it would have been had we bought a piece of dirt up on the corner of Carmichael and Vine, and hired an architect to draw some pictures of, of a, a new library building, and, and had a fund drive and gotten to a certain point of pre-agreed success, you know, gotten over the hump, whether it was 4 million, or three and a half, or whatever it is, and the project starts. That, that went out the window with the opportunity to acquire an existing building. Based on the analysis we did of constructing new versus buying the NMC building and, and converting it, there was about a 25% saving in, to the total project cost associated with buying the NMC building and converting it. To me, that's a no-brainer. You know, why would we do a 12 million dollar project when we can get it done for, for nine and a half or 9.8? And, and so we, we modified our proposal to include that building. When we went to the fund, to the donator community, we, we showed them that building, we showed them what that building could be, and there was great enthusiasm for that. One of the people we talked to said, you know, on a scale of one to 10, this is a 12. The voters could see that building and could identify with that building as a, as a worthwhile library prospect, and voted overwhelmingly in three of the communities. The one that was closest was really St. Joe. And the reason St. Joe was close is because St. Joe is divided into three different school districts, Somerset, New Richmond, and Hudson. And so the loyalties aren't like they are in the town of Hudson, or in the village of North Hudson, or obviously in the city. Troy couldn't play this game because they're really cut in half. Half the community faces toward River Falls, the other half faces toward Hudson. And state laws prohibit Troy from bifurcating itself to have part of the town become a member of the joint library. Yet Troy had a non-binding question on its ballot in April that passed, not overwhelmingly, but it passed, and it intends to put that question on the ballot again, this time, in a binding form. None of the economics that I've talked are contingent on a contribution from them, but there's an opportunity here to, to have a noticeable portion of this project picked up by Troy, if, if their ballot is, is successful. So, I think we can hold our head high and explain that this project hasn't changed from, you know, fundamentally from what we explained in few words to the, to the electors in, in April. It'll take greater skill in explaining it to electors and to explaining it to the elected officials that are going to have to vote yes to get this question on the ballot in these four communities. And this project is set up in such a way that it's all say yes on all required referenda, or the project fails, it goes away. So it's an all or none. If somebody doesn't come through, the project fails. You know, at the end of the day, I think the, the foundation proposal is extremely attractive for this public-private partnership, 50-50 cost sharing, if you will, on the prod, on the capital project. You know, voters have responded overwhelmingly, asking the elected officials to try to make this happen, and that's what we're trying to do, and that's what you're considering doing by putting the binding question on, on the ballot. We think there is time, although it's tight, to get it on the November ballot. The joint library effectively spreads the cost of a library that would be appropriate and fitting for a community of 27,000 or 28,000 people at the end of the day, on a much wider base than if the joint library didn't exist and the city was to carry this alone and count on contributions from, from the county. And, you know, if St. Joe, when St. Joe, before St. Joe joined, I believe they were contributing 70,000 dollars, taxpayers had a line item county library, it wasn't part of the town budget, for, I guess it was 56,000 dollars. And the Hudson Library was getting somewhere in the neighborhood of 32,000 or 33,000 of that 56, and the rest of it was being spread, you know, elsewhere around the county. And so I think everybody joined to, to cause the, the local taxpayer library funds to end up in this library instead of in, you know, Glenwood City, or, or Somerset, or whatever library it was. And I really think that, that we have the opportunity with this project to set an excellent example of great intergovernmental cooperation and bringing benefits to all of our citizens if we get this done. This would be, this would go down in the annals in the state of, of a great example of, of cooperation. And at the moment, you know, I sense that all four are moving forward, not without questions, the kinds of questions that were put on the table tonight, but they are moving forward to let the citizens decide whether or not they want to, to do this. And, you know, we will have as full a disclosure about the realities of this project, it's not our intention to, to hide anything. You know, if we were going to do that, we would schedule a referendum on, you know, the...
December 12th.
Fourth, Tuesday of December, or two days after Christmas, and get 20 people to show up and get it passed. You know, that's not it. There was a value communicated by all four, is we're not going to do that. You know, we're going to put it at the place where most of the voters are going to be there, and this year they'll mostly be there because of the presidential play. So, I think it's an exciting project. I've got, I could speak about this all night, I'm, my voice is shot from talking about it this morning and thinking about it all day. But I think it's a great project, and, and yes, we're going to have to make some compromises to make it happen, we're going to all have to take some risk, but the foundation is convinced that we can raise the money to bring home the end game that we proposed and shared with the voters in the non-binding resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Bye while I'm on this here?
Bye, your level of confidence in this is apparently quite high. You've got a number of city, I should say civic leaders with you. Mr. Heiser from the bank, Susie, does, do any of you care to comment about your belief in the success of this? Or you just want to echo what, you want to...
I totally agree with Bye. My experience of fundraising is...
Ken, why don't you come up here to the, to the lectern and tell everybody who you are?
My name is Ken Heiser. I've lived in Hudson for about the last 28 years and been involved with a lot of fundraisers. Probably the first one was the Hockey Association, and then the YMCA, and the Phipps Center, Phipps Foundation, the hospital is probably the most recent one. But in all those cases, we raised more money than we thought we could, but the other thing we found out, it took a lot longer than we thought we could. And so the concern is, if, if we're looking at, needing a commitment of 2 million dollars in, by sometime early September, that, that could be difficult. I have no doubt in my mind that it can be raised. The other thing that we found, as we were working on the hospital, there was a concern, because we were selling bonds to finance the hospital, and the concern was, gee whiz, once the public found out that the bonds were sold, they're going to stop giving. Well, that didn't happen. There, people have a tendency to want to be involved in something, support something that's good for the community, and there's kind of a bandwagon effect that as things start growing, people start coming forward and, and want to become involved. Sometimes it takes a lot longer. So I don't think that, that there should be a real concern that if we borrow the money, people are going to say, well, you got the money, we don't need to step up because it's a community project, and I think the support will be there.
Thank you. Bye, do you, how do you feel about the 2 million commitment by, in the next 40 days?
That's a tall order, but we have, we have maybe six people in our sights to get the contingent commitments. If, if they all commit to the max, we think we will collect from them ultimately, it'll be 3 million, but, you know, that's, that'd be very lucky. So we're talking about 2 million and, you know, by September 15th, you know, a time for the, the votes for putting it on the ballot. And then this morning, the, I should probably stand up. This morning at the weekly 6:30 meeting, AM that is, we're all kind of like this.
How many hours ago was that now, Bye? Right here in this room?
A lot, yes. Right here, and, let's see, Dean, you were sitting over there, and I was sitting over I forgot where I was, what was I going to say?
About the commitment of 2 billion by the next 40 days?
Oh yeah, this morning, the idea of an additional commitment of 700,000 before we closed on the building. You know, I think that can also work, we'll have the major gifts lined up, you know, and the, the major, major gifts in the next period of time, and that'll allow us to go to kind of the second and third tier givers. And I think by the end of February or end of March, we can accomplish that. So we'd have half the money committed before we were obligated to buy the building. I've been negotiating with Excel on a price, I have a price, I don't think it's good enough yet. And so, you know, we could sign a purchase agreement soon with those guys, I think. We've, we've been talking about terms and when the money would go hard and closing dates and stuff. You know, the building is now empty. We've been to Eau Claire to talk to the president of, of Excel, Wisconsin, who has a say in this. Prior to this, we've been working through the broker who's, who's working for a real estate, you know, expert in Denver, and there's no connection to this community. So we've, we've made that connection, and, and I think we can, we can do better than the price we have at the moment. It will help our overall budget noticeably, and, and I think we can get a closing, you know, say March 31st. Been kind of focusing on a closing in January 31st, but I think we can buy 60 more days. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have a, a committed price and a timeline that's acceptable even before the September deadline for this... before the September deadline for this building.
Thank you. All right. This item requires no action when your questions are done, unless you have guidance for what we should do or if we should do anything differently. Did you have a comment, Lee?
I thought I saw somebody else wanted to say something.
Thank you, Lee. I'm Jim O'Connor, president of the library board, and I certainly agree with everything the other speakers have said, but I wanted to address a broader item. Briefly sketch the history. In the nineties, the library was a city function solely financed by the city with assistance from the county. Several years ago, we formed the joint library, first with three units, and then a year later, the Saint Joe became the fourth unit. And that has spread the funding for the library among the people who use it, which has been a benefit for all concerned, and especially a benefit for the city. And now, we're at the next step. We had been looking for land for a library, and we thought the county land was a possibility, but it was not for sale. Then the NSP, the NMC building became available. Here was a golden opportunity that dropped into the public's lap, if you will, the public being the four communities involved here. The library foundation stepped forward with a very generous offer of raising half of these funds and went to the public with the April first referendum. In that referendum, your voters voted three to one with this proposal. They knew where it was, they knew how much it was going to cost them, and they said, three for one, we want it. And there was similar support throughout the other communities. There are a number of hurdles that have to be overcome. We've been talking too much about them. I acknowledge them, and we're making progress on them. But what we also have to keep in mind is the vision that's out there. The public said three to one, we want this, which basically means it's up to all of us to make it happen. You know, everybody is working hard to that goal. So, we need to keep that goal in mind and not let the details get too much in the way of making this happen. If something doesn't get done for some small reason, the voters aren't going to concentrate on that small reason. They're going to say, officials, library board, and foundation, everybody, we wanted this, why didn't you get it done for us? And that's the thing that we, I think we have to keep in mind. If we set in our mind the goal of making this project happen, we can then agree on the steps to get it done. I suspect that's what everybody really wants to do. I wanted to raise this point in our collective consciousness that it's really this project that we want to get done, and that's what the public wants us to get done, and that's what we shall be working on. So, let's keep going on it and get there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments about the agreements? Ready to move on?
One comment.
Okay.
And, you know, with due respect to everyone who's been working on this, call me naive, but I thought the fundraising was going to be ongoing during this time. It was going to be aggressively ongoing during this time. And what I feel like is, as council, we're sort of being pushed to make a decision to go forward to the voters with significantly less funds raised than we presented to them last spring. I may be the only one uncomfortable doing that, but I'll just say that I am. I'm uneasy going to the voters with, I mean, now we're hearing two million may be difficult to reach by early September. I guess to that, I say, are we rushing this whole thing? The building's empty. Are we rushing things and going to present something to the voters that's not going to pass? Because the fundraising hasn't been done up until this point. I raise it, I know it's late, but...
Well, this is important. Of all the items we've talked about tonight, this is probably as significantly large as any of them.
And I guess what I don't want is you to come back here in a month and say, well, this is what we've come up with. And then we say, well, this isn't going to fly.
Well, that's exactly where this is headed, and that's why I wanted your input. We will be coming back with documents and an agreement, and at that point, it'll be difficult for you to say, I wish it would be different in this way, because every change that you make will have to go and get approved at all the other boards. So, you know, we're doing this in open meetings. If you'd like to know more about what's going on, you can come to, the next one will be August fourth, six-thirty AM, and those are open to the public. I think one of the things that's key, and it's a key difference from probably most private fund drives, is the idea that we're going to bond and buy and build it all. I mean, it may have similarities to the hospital project, for example, but it's a little bit different. And I've struggled with how to fairly, without, to the total detriment of the project, how do you work that out? Part of the thing is, I think everyone recognizes there's a different quality to pledged private donations. Some are as good as money in the bank. I mean, if you've got a written pledge from the Anderson Foundation or someone that will pledge to this, it's just about as good as money in the bank. In fact, banks often loan against pledges like that. The YMCA has a line of credit against their annual pledge drives. If someone's given a couple of years in the past and they've got a signed pledge card from them, the bank will loan them the money even though it hasn't come in. That's a known commodity. My question is, the foundation is very confident that they can raise the five point four million. How confident? Could we take that to the bank? You know, that's my question. I'm pretty sure that the first two million that's coming from those large donors, we could take to the bank. The question is that other three point four million, is that sort of investment grade there or not? And if it isn't, what can we do to sort of protect ourselves that this does end up being a fifty-fifty thing? I'm still looking for the answer to that. I've brought out some proposals. They aren't intended to kill the project. It's actually intended to make it more palatable and acceptable to more voters, and that's why I've been working on that. Because frankly, I think if it goes forward the way it is, I think there's going to be a large, a much larger opposition than what there was actually, no organized opposition to speak of in that non-binding referendum, and there was an organized pro campaign. And I just fear that we will have done a lot of work for something that only has to fail in one of the four places, municipalities. So, that's where we're at. And I guess that's my final comment for the night, unless anybody else has anything more. Randy?
Not at this point.
Pam?
No, not yet.
Ready to go home? Let's go home. The next question is, council to review this. Catherine feels as though she may have a conflict, does have a potential conflict, because she acts as the municipal attorney for both the town of Saint Joe and for the city of Hudson. Would you like to speak to it?
Sure. The town of Saint Joe has asked me to review the agreement. I've explained the conflict to them and discussed it with Dean from the outset. And being that it was just the public official, not just, but the public officials talking amongst themselves without looking for any legal advice, and in fact, got their own attorney to kind of shepherd this through, there hasn't been a conflict. But I did review this agreement, and not for anyone's benefit except my own, to determine whether I thought there's a conflict and the proposed capital agreement or draft. And I think there are issues that are in dispute, outstanding issues, and where the municipality, township of Saint Joe and the city of Hudson may have conflicting interests. And in that situation, given that both, then there was a thought, well, can I do one agreement and not the other? The two agreements should be reviewed by one person, and I believe both clients need and deserve an attorney who will review them with solely their interests in mind. And so, under the professional rules and your best interests, although I'd love to do the work, I don't think it's in your best interest. So, what I would suggest, and Saint Joe, is that you, I've talked with another attorney in a weld firm, just, you're not bound by anything, but just, we have a relationship, or the city does, and he does municipal work, just to see if he would be available in this short timeframe. And he would, so I would give you that referral, and I would also talk with the town chair and give them a referral. I just think that's best for both parties.
Give you an idea of a potential issue where we differ with our partner. The current proposal is that the building would be owned by an LLC. The LLC would be funded and owned by the municipal partners. The current proposal of the village of North Hudson and the town of Saint Joseph is where they will each be paying fourteen percent each, respectively. They'd each like to have one out of the four votes so that the two of them pay twenty-eight percent, but have fifty percent control. I don't accept that. I think the, you know, the vote has to be by how much we pay in, but that's an example of something that's yet to be worked out. The question is, do you want me to have an attorney look this over and to guide us through the rest of this process? If so, should we find someone and hire them?
Yes.
Motion?
I move that we do so.
Good. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, wait a minute. Before the vote, everyone?
Where's the money going to come for this?
Well, would you like to limit your motion to a certain dollar figure, first of all?
Do we need an attorney at this point?
To this point, I have not felt like there were particularly legal issues involved. It's more of a negotiation, and I haven't really felt like we needed an attorney, but we're getting to the end game, and as we've said here, I mean, by the time we bring this back for you to approve, it probably ought to have been reviewed by someone.
Yeah, you're on a short timeframe, and I just think, you're talking about trying to get this done in basically August, and it'll, I just think you don't want to wait till the last minute to bring a new attorney on would be...
I would go with the same amount that we volunteered to pay for Jeff Redmond, that's twenty-five hundred dollars. Do you think that's a reasonable amount, Catherine?
I think you're going to have, the person doesn't, I think what you should do, I talked with Bill Thiel, I think you should call him up and talk it over with him and come to some agreement. I can't speak for him on whether that would be reasonable.
I'm happy with that amount.
Well, I've helped the other council members, too.
It seems reasonable. I mean, ten thousand to draft the whole thing and...
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that our twenty-five hundred would be matched by the other group.
Well, no, this is just your...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
This is us.
Yeah.
This is just us now.
You're right.
Motion is to retain outside legal counsel and to spend up to twenty-five hundred dollars to come from where I don't know. Contingency fund, I guess.
You did that to me last time. Well, that was probably worth it.
It's your motion.
I know. I'm sticking by it.
Where are you funding it from? Where are you funding it from?
We're funding it from general contingency. We still got, what, about forty thousand in there?
Yeah, right.
I hear probably close to five thousand.
Okay.
General contingency. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no.
Move to adjourn.
Now, wait a minute, we got to have any communications from any older person, city attorney, mayor, city administrator.
At my report, let me know if you have questions.
Now, we can adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. All right. All opposed.
Aye, aye, aye.
Good work.